Meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, it has.
If you'd call roll, please.
Alderman Youngworth.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Clothe.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Yep.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder is absent. Alderman Shellpepper is also currently absent. And Alderman McConnell.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move right on to committee business. Discussion of the budget priorities and strategic plan update for 2026. Lori Sullivan-Murray.
Thank you.
Yee-haw.
Right?
Yeah.
He's just getting it right, now you're leaving.
I'm getting it right and you're leaving, yeah.
One more, one more meeting after this.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm hoping to wrap this process up tonight. We started last time with going through the budget priorities for next year's budget from each of the department heads. I did also include those memos in this package just to remind you what they were talking about. And so tonight, I want to take a look at our strategic plan and go through, we have five sheets, five strategic goals. We'll go through them one at a time. You'll see that some of the budget priorities are added in at the bottom. And I'll just tell you as we go through, we're going to actually start, if you're following along in your book, in your computer, we're going to start on the fourth page, which is improve our quality of life assets. And that's just because I need to get Eric out of here, so he's got another meeting he has to go to. So we'll start with this page. So as you can see on the page and in the workbooks that were sent, there's items from last year's plan that are crossed out, which means we finished them. All of the updates were in the, in the status update booklet that I gave you. Departments went through all of these and updated a status on every one of these for your information. And then the crossed out ones are finished. And ones that the departments think should be added are listed at the bottom. And just, I didn't get any additions from any council members. But if, while we're going through this tonight, you do have something to add, this is a spreadsheet, so I can add it in on the fly, that's fine. But Eric had submitted items for this strategic plan. Do you want Eric to talk about those, Mark? Or just read them or see if there's questions?
I think this is a time for the council to ask and provide questions to Mark, to Eric. So maybe if we have Eric come up and give the council the opportunity to ask any questions for additions or comments, that might move things along a little bit more officially. If you're in agreement with that.
No, I'm fine with that. So Eric has three items here that he's looking to add into the plan to work on starting this next, this year and next year.
So yeah, I added three, three items here. Plan and develop safe connections in the northeast corner of Oconomowoc Bike and Pedestrian Connection over Highway 67. That's something that's been a priority of ours to try and make that safe connection over that highway area. Chapman Park Barn, we started the planning over this last year and looking at implementing other additional changes, adding, you know, restoring the barn and then adding native plantings and restoring that area. And then evaluate village green enhancements and public restrooms. Kind of, we went through that process and going to be visiting that here in the next couple of months to the next year.
So council, if there are any questions you have for Eric, or more importantly, things that you'd like him to look at or other items, now would be a great time. And they'll take that back and they'll start working on their budget for next year.
I personally think you've got, we've done a lot in the last few years and you've got a lot on your plate. I wouldn't add anything more this year.
Houses in his office today and I would concur.
After the boat launch and 517 and, you know, we're still maybe working on village green, there's a lot. And I just, you know, wish you the best this year.
Council members, anything, yeah, I'm rusty.
One, and I know this is going to be a lofty, lofty ass, so preface that. If for some weird unknown reason, we find extra funds at some point this year, allocating them towards the dog park and some of the improvements that we'd like to see there and the plans would be really welcome. I'm not asking for us to put it in the budget, but you know, as a tertiary, if we find something extra, would love to see any contribution towards that.
I think it's a good point because we have a lot of projects in the queue that you're working on now, some of them finalizing, others that still are in a couple of phases. So, good point. Be nice to finish them all at some point in the very near future. Lori, do you have any comments?
I do. Because, that's, thank you, Eric. So it's not just parks in this area, but library as well. While I don't have anything new to add in here, Jen is continuing to work towards the things that are listed on here. And so really, this whole area, quality of life assets encompasses mostly parks and library. And if there's any additions or changes that council would like to see sort of in this area here where the library is at.
And council, do you have any further questions for Eric? He's going to step away and attend the Lake Management District meeting for Lac La Belle for us, because they have it on the same night. So he's going to be our representative. Any other questions before we? Thanks, Eric. Did you want to bring Jen up? Jen?
If Jen, yeah, if they've got any feedback for Jenny.
Thank you.
Yeah, like Lori said, I haven't really added anything. The feasibility study will be ending at the end of the year, so I have to kind of take all the information that I'm gathering from the space needs analysis and the feasibility study and then really take some time to kind of figure out the next steps. And then the combining of the desks, we're continuing to work on that as well.
Jen, in the feasibility, in the space needs analysis was there, and I know I saw some of the plans, was there a senior center or senior area in, in those plans?
There was not.
Okay. Because we, we do have a senior center here, and I know we, we've funded some money for that. And I know there's been past talks by past aldermen about evaluating whether we incorporate, if we're, we're going to expand the library incorporating some of that space for seniors. So I don't know how we plug that in. You know, for me, it's not just expanding programming for the seniors, but maybe space? I, I don't know, you know?
It's definitely something we can go back and look at, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, because the, the addition you're looking at right now is almost doubling, well, double plus the size of the library. So there's got to be some additional space in there. If we're going to incorporate some senior analysis, that would be the place to do it, I think.
So Matt, they were active in that discussion, that came up a lot. I forget her name from the, the.
Janie Gex.
Yes, was there at every meeting. And, and so it was discussed, I don't think that, it never came to a, a big priority. But that doesn't, I guess I wouldn't expect people coming there to support the library to be thinking about how do you prioritize senior needs into the library. So it's not probably surprising.
Yeah.
So I think it's, I think it's, and they just lost space in their area. So they're definitely looking for more.
Well, maybe that's not the right place for senior center type activities either, I don't know. But it's, if we're doubling the size of the library eventually, if we even get there, I mean, it would make sense for us to kind of coordinate that, I think.
I kind of think between that and the community center, like, we have a lot of community space that could accommodate some of that on a flexible schedule or, you know. The dedicated space might be the tough part, but certainly usable space probably is more.
Programmable space, that's.
Programmable space versus.
I thought we were taking that back parking lot away.
Those are just some of the concept plans.
Karen?
You said the, you said the feasibility study should be done by the end of this year? Does, I mean, I don't know anything about feasibility studies. Do they take that long?
The RFP closes this week, so I'm just, they take about three to four months. So I'm just saying, by the end of the year, we should be totally done with that. And that really kind of teaches me and all of us, like, what can we raise? How does that work? And then we take that information and then we look into a capital campaign.
Okay. I do think though, and I'm very in favor of somehow or another partnering with the senior center to have some sort of senior space. And I think that you would find that with the feasibility study, or you know, the amount of money that could be raised would be a lot greater. I mean, if you sell that to the community as this is not just a library, this is also a senior center.
I concur.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and, and I will tell you, from the senior center standpoint, the building they're in now is falling apart.
It's awful.
It's falling apart. But they would need quite a bit of dedicated space. If you've been in where they are now, there's certain, they have the office space that they, they would need for sure and some other, you know, dedicated space for their ongoing activities that they do every single day. But I think it'd be a good fit with the library. I think that'd be awesome, you know, and kind of have the seniors in the same environment where there are kids and other families and, yeah.
And so, so people understand the senior center is looking for space and they want to run their own programming. So it's not as though you have to add programming, they're just looking for the space. And so the concept of trying to do that something with the new library has been discussed and at many levels. And I have discussed it with people that were the consultants that came in. But if you noted, when they came to do their presentation, it was not mentioned one time. So I think they're missing the boat here. And I've, I've said it multiple times, and then we always come back to the community center with, yeah, there's spaces there, but it's not very accessible. So the problem with that is if you provide SROs or security guards that go walk across the road, that's when they come. We had that experience when we did a senior meeting last fall and resource meeting. They are, no one wants to go to the senior center, the senior center, or the community center. The community center, before it was a new building, usually would have 30 to 50 seniors come for lunch every day. Now you have four, on average.
Why admit it? Because of the accessibility?
It's accessibility.
I have, I have a neighbor that.
And so I think it's, I'm just throwing my two cents out, because I have expressed this already to the library, and, and they have to do what they think is best for the library and their board. But to me, we're really missing the boat. And you had a lot of seniors at these meetings, and they were there because they're looking for help. So, you know, we're not to that point. We have a needs assessment, you have to look at all of that. But I think, Matt, you hit it right at the, at the beginning, is that, you know, what are we going to do? And whoever said that, you know, it's a good way for fundraising, is you, Jennifer? You know, it's, it's a need, but I do think it's being ignored by the library, no offense.
Well, I will definitely bring that up for the feasibility study, because that's, you know, that's the fundraising aspect. So that's what I'll work with them on and, and seeing if that's a good way to go.
And you don't, you don't agree, though? What is, you're?
No, I don't, I don't agree that, I mean, I.
I don't mean to not agree, but.
No, 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 but I mean, the mayor said it was constantly brought up. It was, it was a minor point at those meetings. I was at all those meetings. It was, it was not something that was.
It was constantly something I brought up to them multiple times.
I was at the first or second one, and there was, I would say, at least two or three seniors that brought up, how can we work the senior center into this project? Because I remember Kathy was one of them, Ginny was one of them, and at least one or two others that I don't know their names.
It's unfortunate, because the community centers.
Yeah, I just would not characterize it as a, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against it in any way. I don't, I don't want to come across the way, I just don't want to. It was not, it was not a major focus area of those meetings, I would say. It was brought up, certainly, but it wasn't, anyway. I think, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I do think it's, they're not a community funded, so we're letting a non-community funded organization into a community funded building, planning around that. I just think there's a lot of nuance to figure around that. I'm in favor of it, but it is a straight forward, is build some space with community dollars to give to the senior center, because that's not a, it's not part of the.
I think that, that objection has been raised before as well, when we've talked about that concept, is the library is not, is partially funded through, you know, county and other communities. And what, how does that work if we're building the space, you know?
But I think we can kind of get back on track, all really good comments. I think everybody wants to support it, but let's kind of get back on. Any other comments for Jen and, on the library? I didn't hear anything about a remote library request here at all, so I understand that that must not be a request from the library board. I brought it up last time, so.
You had something.
Yeah, do you anticipate the combining of the reference and circulation desk, a large project or something minimal? And the only reason I ask is if we're planning on doing a multimillion dollar remodel, do we want to sink a ton of funds into that?
My thought process was it's going to take at least five, if not 10 years, to get a new building. By combining desks, it does give us a lot of space now in the library. So like, for example, like our holds are behind the desk and people have to ask to pick up their hold. I want to get them out and have open holds out so people can get them themselves. I want to expand the children's area. So I'm just looking more kind of for the next five years, because it's going to be a while before we have a new building.
Yeah, I'm totally on board, you know, kind of a minor, you know, thing, so, cool.
Great, thank you, Jen. And yeah, sorry.
Well, let me speak to the virtual branch, unless you want to start.
I was just going to say that we have talked about it, we talked about it at the board meeting, and we are doing more research on it.
Cool.
Yeah, so it's not off the table.
On what?
The virtual branch?
Oh, okay, still the virtual, okay.
I, even if, and if it's off.
Add that down to the bottom down here, that that's something that you want to be working on?
Sure.
And if it's not on the table, that's fine, we just need to know for this year.
Yeah, so.
It's, it's a really, that's a really tough position, because, you know, we're asking in.
Did you say virtual?
May.
Remote.
And, you know, if we don't, if we don't have it in now, it doesn't happen until for two years, right? I mean, that's the problem with kind of the budgeting here is, and we don't know anything about what we might need, you know, from an operations budget or from a, from a capital budget of furniture or, you know, other equipment needed there. So that was kind of where we landed last night, is we just don't even know what number to plug in there.
Well, and if you don't know, then let's just not put it on there. It's just you have an opportunity for free space.
We don't put it in the budget, but we put it on the plan to do the research. So if they plan to bring it back the following year in budget, its lease is here, and then we can look at it next year if you decide to bring it forward or not.
I want to be really crystal clear, you may lose an opportunity for free space. That's the only thing, that's a time issue, and that's up to your board, that's not.
Well, so what is the ti, I guess that was another question we had, what is the timing?
They've, they've broken ground, and if you want something, we need to know the next month.
I think, I think we can say, well, that's the problem. 800 square feet is what we think we need. We haven't done a feasibility to know if we can even afford the ongoing operational cost or if the.
If you're not ready, you're not ready, I understand.
For $100,000 or whatever in infrastructure for it.
Yeah. I just think that you should be able to figure it out, but that's a personal bias, so.
Is there just opposition to the remote library from the library board, or is it just?
Because you can raise the money and get it put populated.
I think it's a great idea.
No, but I think there's one, the board is generally, I mean, there's one, one person that has some serious concerns, everybody else is, I think, on board.
Moving it along, okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's not personal, guys, it's just, I'm looking at an opportunity for space. Space is a hard thing to come by, and if I can't give a developer the space and the space needs, and it's something that you would want for next year, then that's okay. Then maybe another opportunity will come up in a year when you're more prepared, or you've done more due diligence, because you don't want to do something that's going to fail either, I respect that.
And I think that's where it's at. I think the addition of Costco out there, I mean, the traffic going by there, if people know they can now pick up their holds at a remote branch, if they're coming from Waukesha, Peewaqui, anywhere in the county can pick up their holds as they go to Costco and drop off their book when they go to Costco, that's huge.
Well, the goal of the remote branch, like you and I've always discussed, is increasing your true non-resident circulation, which increases the value in numbers and dollars coming from the county and the other communities, which is the goal.
And this would only enhance it by having that.
Yeah, it can only enhance it. And in the worst case scenarios, it's, it's, it doesn't, and we just close it after a year or two.
And keeping your neighborhood from going to Delafield?
Well, no, there's a ton of people from our area and Summit Endowsman that go to Delafield, there's no question. Delafield's small, it's easy to get to.
But it's really, it comes back to, we're giving you the information, we have our one board member, it's up to your board to direct us. I just don't want you to lose an opportunity, but if you're not ready, that's your choice. If you are ready, we're happy to help. If maybe another opportunity will come up down the road, I think this is a really good opportunity, and I'd strongly recommend that you take it, but that's your choice. It's not, it's not the city's decision.
How long would it take for you to have that, something ready?
With unstaffed branch, some information?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. We will do what we can.
Cool.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
My only comment to that, Mayor, is it, I totally like your push on it, but it is kind of, it is a city decision, too. I mean, if you want land to build a new library on, it's going to be city land. You know, so there's a little bit of, you know, let's work on some other ideas that we have as well, right?
Well, if you have something like this and it helps us and you can get out to 10 years where you have to build a big place.
Right, it helps us increase that circulation, maybe increase some of the dollars coming in the door to help with operations at the larger library.
Okay. But that's, it, it, it's your entity, you guys have to decide. We're here to try to help, but it's a resource that's available, and we'll wait to hear from you.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Lori, in this area?
I think we're done with page number four, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
What happened to like Margaritaville or whatever ring that one time?
Well.
That's right.
Yeah, I'd say I was kind of embarrassed about that.
I was impressed.
Okay. So start back at the beginning of the book, we'll start with the, provide a safe and secure community. So you, the items are all listed here, there's a couple of new items here. So this, this involves police, fire, and some of the water and electric utility as well. So first off, you can see some of these items have been completed, and then there's a few new items on the bottom here. And so I guess it's, do you have questions? Do you have other things you want to add? Do you want the departments to come up and talk about them?
If anybody has anybody that'd like to call up, go for it. If anybody who has comments, jump in. This is your time, council.
Are we still talking budget priorities?
Yes.
Budget priorities, and this is, same thing, strategic plan, budget priorities play together. So even if you don't want it in the budget in '26, but you want departments to be working on it, now's the time to let us know.
So just for purposes tonight, though, the format, are we going to talk budget priorities after this? I see a tab for budget priorities.
Lori?
Well, this was your workbook, so this was your place to write down things and send to me, but I didn't get anything. So if you have things written down that you're just bringing tonight, I can add them in. And basically, I'm adding them in as we go page by page here. So if you have a budget priority in the provide safe and secure community area, now would be the time to let us know.
Well, under C. What, Chief Fisters here? Is that where you were talking about where we would start out by putting the, the blinking pedestrian thing over by the post office? And then should that be down here in department notes or?
Yeah, C, C is where the option for addressing the safety and visibility of downtown pedestrians. That's where the new crosswalk signals came into play. Over the years, we tried different things of, you know, narrowing the road out, you know, pulling, you know, things out, putting up just a, you know, some other items, making it a little more visible and so forth like that. But Captain Tim's been working on that, so if there's any questions, he can answer those.
Yeah. No, you know, I've talked to you, so I don't have any additional questions, but if you just want to clarify maybe what you and I talked about and what your thoughts are on going forward with this?
Yeah, so basically, this is more being proactive. The goal was to kind of make sure, if you go through to downtown, we've talked about, didn't really, we, we've got a lot of complaints, nothing, no incidents, knock on wood of major incidents of anybody getting hit with that crosswalk. But if all of us have driven through the downtown, it gets a little dicey downtown, especially in that mid-block area. So this is where, if you look by the community center, we have the flashing lights. If the pedestrian actually hits the sign, it'll kind of flash. That's kind of what we're looking for in a downtown, especially right in between that area of mid 100 block, as cars either are blocked because of the, there's cars parked on the street, there's trees kind of in that one little area. So I'm looking to have something that will actually hit a button and it'll flash on both sides as you're crossing between fray and bootleggers. And then we're also looking for in a permanent, like, enhancement marking, it will come down, we're kind of where the solar panel would be. So especially at night, there'd be some like white lights on the crosswalk. We want it there, and we're also possibly looking at up enhancing by the community center, we kind of talked earlier, especially at night, we have weddings, we have parties that are going on, that people are leaving at late at night. When you're crossing there, you have the lights that are flashing, but nothing on the sidewalk that's kind of giving you that extra white light as you're crossing the streets.
Do you have to push the button for those to, oh, okay.
Yep, by the community center. So right now downtown, we have nothing. It's literally just, it says, you know, cross, and you just have those, we're looking to have those, if you hit the button, it'll kind of flash.
Ah, okay. Yeah, I, I was picturing them just flashing all the time, but yeah, it's better if they're not.
Not, not there. So we were looking at maybe doing it right downtown, seeing how that would work. And if that works and the council proves it or whatever, looking to maybe go by the post office or by that, on the North Main by Splash area there, where that kind of, kind of stills building up. But we're looking at mainly downtown and then upgrading by the community center for that flashing, for the white light coming down on the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, I don't know, this is dealing with safety, but I'm not certain, maybe this isn't the right time. But I know that we're going to be redoing Silver Lake Street, okay?
Is it a budget item?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
And over by Bolson, there's no crosswalk right there. Can we kind of look at that and see if we can't put something there? Because I've, I've had some complaints from some constituents.
Oh, boy, all the big boys are kind of.
Oh, boy, now I'm screwed.
That's a good question.
Yeah, we, through the design process, we did get the same results as we evaluated that area, noticing there was no crosswalk in Silver Lake. So we have a sidewalk on the north side of Bolson, comes from the high school, straight to Silver, right? Unfortunately, I wanted to continue that crosswalk straight across to continue that movement, but there's a driveway that goes right there. So what we ended up doing was crossing Bolson and then getting him across Silver Lake with a crosswalk. Is that, is that what you were asking?
Yes.
Yeah, so we noticed the same thing.
Okay.
So that'll go in, in the project here this summer.
So it's going to be this summer?
It's the first phase, so yeah, you should see it mid-July.
Great.
And will it be illuminated or anything, or just a regular?
We can, we can look at that for sure, it's not in the plans right now, but we do have it reflective epoxy paint on the.
Right.
On the street.
Great, thank you.
Matt?
This might be for you, I'm not sure. We had $10,000 in this year's budget for a crosswalk in, on Z, is that still?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Cool. Other questions or comments on safety and secure community?
Got one more for you, Mayor.
Yeah.
So just, just again, so I'm on the same page, if, if there's a priority that a member of this council has that isn't listed on this sheet right now, we're at liberty to speak about it and bring it up.
You're, you can bring it up, you can add it, and the goal is to try to capture as much as we can to give our staff the opportunity to investigate.
And regardless of whether the majority of this council agrees with it or the department head agrees with it.[1632.25]
Correct. If you're, as in Alderman, you have that right, that's what, that's what we're asking for.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I think two-way discussions are most productive. That's how we find the most value in it, that there's a give and take between the people on this side of the table, the people on that side, the elected officials and the staff. It should be a two-way. I'm not here to be lectured by one side. They're not here to be lectured by me. It should be a discussion both ways. And I think it's unfortunate the exact opposite happened a couple of weeks ago when we had this discussion about budget priorities.
Okay.
Because a budget priority of mine isn't listed on that. Department heads' budget priorities doesn't mean I can't speak about it tonight, right? I don't have to wait until the final budget gets passed.
No, no. What we want to do is.
Do they give an up or down vote, right, Mayor?
So, what you, if you have something you want to talk about that's on the budget, in any area, you can add that here. That's what Lori's doing.
Okay.
And by bringing that forward, if we can take it, maybe things were negative in the last discussion. Let's see how we can turn it into a positive and make it constructive so we can figure out, is that something that you guys will be voting on?
Well, I would just say, my, I've got a lot of priorities as it relates to the budget, right? But something that I've been passionate and interested about is in our Flock camera program. I've brought it up in the past. It's something we've discussed. I've been pretty transparent about the concerns I've had. I've understood, you know, why we're doing it, and I've still raised those concerns. So, it was revealed last week that the city of Oconomowoc has doubled the number of Flock cameras in the city that was previously reported. So, previously, we've been told there was four cameras. There's actually eight cameras. The city police department is requesting two additional cameras, is my understanding, in this upcoming budget. And so, I think to facilitate a discussion on that request for the budget, it would be helpful if Captain Tim could do another update on the Flock program at our next budget meeting with some specific information.
Well, we could also, we could also just bring it to a regular council meeting and have a discussion of where we are and what's going on. What we're trying to do here is to say, okay, here are some budget requests. And are, is there, how does that relate to what has been proposed? And do you have a budget request that you want them to look into? So.
Well, and that's my, my, my budget request is to analyze, to assess the Flock camera program.
To see if we need two more or not.
Those additional cam, two additional cameras are being requested in the upcoming budget.
And that's fine.
So, I would appreciate that update from Captain Tim.
That sounds good. And Mark will figure out the best way to do it. Absolutely.
So, and just for the record, what, what I would appreciate is how many cameras are in the city? Who's physically operating and monitoring the cameras? Who pays for the cameras? And who are the organizations that are party to the contract? Why the two additional cameras are being requested? And how many times Flock cameras located in the city of Oconomowoc have been used to solve or prevent a crime that occurred in the city of Oconomowoc?
Okay. Could you do me a favor?
I'll email it to you.
If you could email it to Mark, and would you please copy me on that, Chaz?
Happy to.
And then, just kind of bullet point, because what we want to do is make sure if we do the investigation, we get the information you want.
Absolutely.
Or in some cases, we may not be able to get some information because they don't have access. All depends upon what the requests are in case that changes. Good.
I appreciate that.
It's on, it's on there. Any other things on protection and community?
I have two comments generally. One, Chaz, please, if you can copy me on that too, you know, I was, I had some concerns about Flock when we first voted on it. I think you and I were the two outliers on the, on the vote.
I don't think it was a tied vote.
Was it a tie vote?
It was a broken tie.
Oh, was it a tie vote? Oh, I forgot. Okay. So, but I, I, I did have concerns about Flock, so keep me up to speed. I didn't know that we had eight cameras. I didn't know that was a, you know, I thought we only voted on four.
Eight in the city of Oconomowoc.
Oh, okay.
So, for clarity, and I think we need to put that into another meeting.
Yeah.
The city has four that we manage, and there are four at the high school.
Oh, okay.
So, a different entity has four cameras. But I think Chaz is just trying to get the clarity, which is fine. And I think that's good. But let's, instead of going into the weeds on that item, let's find a time where we can get all the facts. And then, let's go into weeds together and figure out if we could make hay out of the weeds.
Well, that's a pos, that's, that's positive then. Thank you, Chaz.
That's what us farmers do.
I would like to just add one under the "Providing and fostering safe and clean water." I know we, I had mentioned this last week. I think we should, we should add something in there about the levels of chemicals being added, including but not limited to fluoride and other chemicals into our water. I know that Kevin is working on a, Kevin and his group are working on a.
So, that's already planned for June as a council agenda item? I don't know if that, what? Committee of the whole level to start with. But as it goes into a capital budget, Matt, is there something that relates to the capital budget here?
No.
Or is this an operational item?
Well, I think it's no different than the Flock camera update.
With the Flock cameras, you buy a lot of stuff?
No, and this, this is great because some of this stuff is, you know, what we want to put into the budget. Others are things that council wants us to bring to talk about and research.
Talk about.
And, you know, for instance, if we stop adding fluoride to the water, you know, that'd be 7,500 to 10,000 saved a year, you know? So, that's, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it's money and it's taxpayer and ratepayer money. So, I think it does address budget issues.
Well, it, it is a budget issue, but it's operational, not capital.
And that's okay.
And that's okay. And so, let's just capture it all. But I think, I think, Matt, we already have that one in the queue, so you should be fine.
Yeah, I think it's cool to have it on the strategic plan, too. I like, you know, I think we should try to add what we can. But thank you, guys. I know you guys were working on getting that report, so.
And I have put in here things that they brought to you in budget priorities as well.
Yep.
Because at the end of this, I'm really looking for a nod on, yeah, we're adding these things in. These are things we're going to be bringing to you in August and September.
Well, and for instance, number five is something we discussed a, a year or two ago when we added the iron filter as part of the budget for well eight, which is, you know, adding more iron filters to wells to try to eliminate the phosphate in the water, which goes perfectly in line with my request for some of the information on the chemicals, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Mayor.
Other items, guys?
I just have one question for you.
Yeah, shoot.
Is it common, and I want, I want to make sure our police officers are fully equipped with everything they absolutely need. Is it common for all of our officers to have full tactical kits? So, ballistic helmets and rifle blades?
That's what we're working on, which is, we're actually meeting with Jennifer Forman-Couth, I think, tomorrow on that fundraising and stuff like that. So, yeah, those items are going to be fundraised.
Yeah, it's fundraised by all. I was just curious, like, if we're spinning, is it common for municipalities to have all their officers with that equipment?
It, it varies by the size of the department. You know, the small, the medium size, yeah. But, I mean, city of Waukesha, no. I mean, they have their tactical teams.
Got it. So, departments are like a SWAT team.
Correct.
Cool. Perfect.
Sure.
Okay, anything else, guys, from Safety and Security?
Okay, then we move, this one, we move into improving and maintaining our infrastructure and facilities. So, the items that we have and the items that have been finished, you've got status updates on all of these, and then a couple of new items from wastewater. Anything else from council or questions?
One thing I'd like to add, but maybe this isn't the appropriate place. It's something we're still investigating. I met with a historical society, and they're going to be doing a large capital campaign to really renovate and refresh the whole Historical Society building and the infrastructure. So, I don't have enough details yet, and they're still working on it. But at some point in this, in this budget, I'll try to bring forth a potential ask that they may help. They may want to help us in that process. Dollar amount, we don't know yet. But that is, sort of is infrastructure, but this is, this is probably not the right place. Could be, maybe under, the first thing, assess the quality of life, yeah.
Probably in here, Mayor.
You're right. Can you just add that, Historical Society support? But I just want to make, if you have a chance, go check it out. But it's pretty interesting. They've just, they hired an executive director, and that executive director now is transitioning into full-time. And they're really doing some nice things, but as with everything, they need money. Kevin?
I'm looking at C, and C three, it says, "Research the addition of electric charging stations." Is that also referring to the cars?
That's for electric cars.
Now, why can't we give that to the filling stations, the gas stations around here? Why is it we need to take that burden on?
If you saw the comments, I don't know if those made it out, Lori, but the comments on this that was here for the last, you know, couple, few years at least for these charging stations, the utilities actually looked at it and are taking a pause on this. It's still in the strategic plan moving forward. We're not dumping the idea.
Okay.
But we are allowing, you know, we don't have any land by the freeways and stuff.
Right.
And the influx of electric vehicles hasn't taken over the world where there's a high need for them at this time.
Right.
So, if it's a quick trip or something that goes out at the interstate and the legislation has changed to allow those kind of entities to charge by the kilowatt hour. So, with that being said, you know, we're looking for, we're not going to, we don't want to be in competition with places like that.
Right.
But if there's a true need and no one's taking it, we would entertain doing that.
So, this is just a placeholder?
It has been. I mean, we're looking at it. We're keeping an eye on things. Laws have changed. There was something out there that wouldn't allow those entities to sell directly, you know, like a secondary. Right now, in the state of Wisconsin, or prior to that legislation, a utility had to sell electricity to a customer that couldn't be sold by, you know, resold. But that has changed for these electric vehicle charging stations recently. So, that allows these people to, like, QuickTrip or whatever, to put something in and sell to a customer at a rate by how much they use. So, it might very well be taken over by that kind of market. Because for us to do it, we'd have to go in partnership or rent, have land and stuff like that. And we don't have anything out on 67.
Yeah, that was my point. I just didn't want to have to.
No, so we're not actively going. We're keeping an eye on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, Jennifer?
Thinking of like the electric charging stations, didn't we have some at the, I forgot what it's called, the newer-ish parking structure back Collins?
Collins Street.
And then, they were taken out.
There's no parking structure on Collins.
There's not parking structure. Sorry.
I'd love to see a parking structure over on Collins, you know?
Shit. Chief, I need your help here.
Next topic.
No, but didn't we have, wait, didn't we have electric charging stations there, and then they got taken out because they were never used?
So, we had an agreement with a private company that have one there.
Okay.
It wasn't being used. They were, the payments to the city were minimal. So, when we redesigned the parking lot, we came to the council and said, would you rather have two parking spaces or a charging station that's not being used? We opted to pull the charging station.
Okay.
Good question.
Yep. And then, just a reminder, too, I think, you know, when you look at some of these that have been on here for a while, every single one of these items has a recent update for you on the status of it or what's happening. And I think that document is probably 45 pages that we gave you, but it was clickable, so you could click into this area and take a look at what those status updates are. But just a reminder, that document's out there. I want to put that on the website, too, just so people can see where we are with some of these projects. So.
One of the items I mentioned a couple of years ago, and I, I think we've kind of gone around and around on it, is some investigation or research into renewable energy, like solar panels to, to, to run. I mean, I don't know, I, I know we're not necessarily like a ma, which is why the electric car charging isn't a big deal. I mean, that's a big deal in California and Arizona, Florida. Around here, it's just not a thing because it's cold and it's hard to do all that in the cold. But I'd love to see us add something in the council note about exploring, you know, concepts to run some of our facilities with either solar or some other renewable energy. It may never be economically viable for us, but I've always thought it'd be a good idea for us to have some. What, what do you got?
I was just going to say, that was in here.
Where?
It's not in here this year. It was in last year.
Okay.
And then, the status update included the research that was done and the reason why it's coming off the plan.
Yeah, we did the assessment a year, a little over a year ago.
And, I mean, that's something that, if you want to look at it again sometime in the future, if things are, you know, changing as far as costs for doing that kind of thing. But in the last year's plan, the status update was given, and then the, basically, that item was crossed out for now.
Yep. Matt?
Yeah, I don't know which one up above the fleet, 1E. This is something, I know we've talked about in the past, and with the changing weather patterns in winter, and we typically always had a new plow truck on every year, you know, which is probably $400,000 now. And I know they have a lifespan of 20 years. And are we, I guess I just want to make sure we're being forward-looking there, that if we, you know, I used my snow blower three times this year. Next year, I might use it 40 times. I understand that two years doesn't make a trend, but it, it sure seems like weather's changing a little bit down here. So, do we have the right equipment? Are we investing the right amount in that? Or is there a way that we can make our fleet more flexible, you know? Or how do we prolong the life of those so that we're not spending every year on a plow truck that seems to have less and less use? Mark, I know this year about to tell me otherwise.
So, any vehicle or piece of equipment that we have in the city that we're looking to replace, we evaluate it to say, does it need to go now? So, as you're mentioning, if we're not using the trucks, they're not getting the wear and tear, and you hit a 15-year cycle and that truck's still good, we're not going to bring it forward looking to replace. So, we are doing that, and I understand what you're saying.
Kevin?
All kidding aside, this is just for future. I, I don't think that we should, you know, jump on it right now, but just please consider this. I'd like for you to consider it, and please don't shut me down, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Uh-oh.
What's coming? Let me hit record.
It's in reference to the parking structure. And I say that because we've got a problem. We're landlocked. At the end of the day, because of the things that have happened in the recent past, if you want to call it, we're landlocked. And the only way, we have a huge problem, and that is with parking. People can't park down here. People can't park down here. They're not going to come down here. So, one of the solutions that we've had for a long time has been to, oh, well, we don't need that house over there, so let's just go ahead and blow that house down and put some parking over there. I have a problem with that only because I don't think that we should take good land and blow it down and put blacktop on it. I, I think that we really do need to have a study done on exactly what it would take for us, a true study done. What it would take for us to have a parking structure so that we can populate, house those, those vehicles. Maybe it's three, four, or five times a year. But those three, four, or five times a year, our constituents, our individuals here need it for their businesses.
So, your request is to do a, a market analysis for a parking structure?
Correct.
That will cost X amount of dollars, and that's the budget item you'd like to have it discussed at a later date?
Right. I'm not saying it's going to be done next year or anything, but at least it gives us an idea, and we start the process of understanding that we're not buying any more land, guys. We can only go up.
I totally support that, Kevin. Hundred percent. In fact, I think Duffy's got a plan for a parking structure years ago over a cross-street, right? Isn't there a plan somewhere in your office about cross-street?
Right next door?
Yeah, next door, too. And, and I know other stakeholders downtown have other ideas for different portions and parcels of land in downtown that could work if we need to. I, I'm, I'm supportive of that, and I think we should look at it seriously in the future, what it would take to get a small structure somewhere downtown.
I, I think now is the time.
Other comments and requests? Let's keep moving, Lori?
Yep. Focus on community growth. And this has mostly to, I think this is mostly Bob's area. And Jason, Gallo, sorry. So, as I said, you've got updates on all these. I don't see a lot. A lot of these are ongoing things that they are always working on. So, you're not seeing a lot of cross-outs on this one. But they do, every year when we do this, provide updates on where we are or what we've done in these areas. And then, Bob added an item for the Winkspan area on Tech Hub.
No lift, bird, or Lime scooters downtown? No, I'm kidding.
Lime approached us four years ago. We didn't have organizational support to be able to bring it in throughout the organization.
Yeah.
Question, Bob. No.
Bob? Bob, can you come back up?
Bob. Okay, under Tourism Destination Initiatives, three. We're just trying to get through the 150th right now, but what are we looking at as far as the 250th of our nation next year?
Wow, see? I don't know if we're, I, I haven't talked about it from the city's perspective, the Historical Society. My involvement there, we're doing some things. We could collaborate with them on some of those elements of the.
I think the Rotary also was wanting to potentially collaborate on that as well. Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to get through this year.
I know. I know. Thank you.
But I think to your point, when you, if you want to do something special in 2026, you've got to start planning now. We started the 150th almost two years ago. So, I think the point's well-taken. So, Bob, I think if we can start putting that on your docket, since you don't have enough to do.
Okay, the last page that we have to look at is enhancing the effectiveness of our city government. And so, there's items here, you know, from the city clerk, technology, finance, city administration. And as you can see, there's items again that are, that are marked off. Check your status updates for where we are with all of these things. Gina has, the city clerk has added a couple of things that were included in her budget priorities to take a look at. And the two items that I have there are also, were in my budget priorities memo, which are really more research and forward-looking kinds of plans than budget at this time, but things I think we should put into the strategic plan. Is there any other comments on this or additions, deletions?
I think we should look at maybe, we, we've talked about this for a while, and I've had some questions from staff about past council policies, like our policy on, you know, construction management and things like that. And I, I think it probably would be a time for us to add something in there to start working on council bylaws or council policies.
Okay.
I don't know if that's really a budgetary thing, so to speak, but we, we've talked about it for a while.
If we do it internally, no, but I think it's a good placeholder to.
It's a good place to put that map because then those are things we'll be bringing to council later, you know, that, that you want to hear about or bring forward so that you can discuss it in more detail.
And council policy, that term can go in a lot of different directions, so it'd be, need to be narrowed down.
Yeah.
And then, you kind of pick away at the things.
Council policies or bylaws or, or something of that nature to, you know, we've, whether it's, it's votes for president and vice president, how those have functioned in the past, or, you know, majority votes on things, there, there's things that we can address in there. you know, majority votes on things, there's things that we can address. And there are other communities that have bylaws and policies. And I think there are certain things we, as a council, ought to adopt resolution-wise, like our policy on the construction management, engineering, that we talked about years ago, that we kind of discussed, did, but it's never really, it's not really written down anywhere. And so if we want that to continue in the future, I think we need to have it written somewhere, whether via a resolution or policy.
And it could also be shifted into a policy and guidelines that memorializes it, or should it be a resolution, or should it be an ordinance? There are a lot of pros and cons in which direction.
Well, in those.
Investigating those would be really good.
Yeah, and I'm happy to take the lead there and start crafting some ideas and doing that. It's something I've talked about for a couple of years, and I really haven't gotten off the ground, but I think this is probably the year to work on it.
That'd be good. Good. Yeah, Kevin?
Anybody else?
Kevin?
I'm sorry, Kevin.
I don't know if this is proper. I just, I'll just throw it out there. I was at a meeting not too long ago, and they talked about the sign ordinance, sign ordinance, and I don't, I don't know when it was the last time it was looked at. I understand it's quite antiquated, and.
So number three on the top?
Jason, you have an update on that in the workbook that we handed out?
The way she was going up and down with that, I couldn't see it.
It's okay. It's hard to keep track. There's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, that's been on the radar for several years to update sign ordinance. I had past interns look at that. Rachel looked at it, and it just hasn't, hasn't been finished, I guess. So we can look at it. I know the Architectural Commission seems like there's a different type of sign every other month. So we're, it's a complicated issue. There's a lot of different varieties. There's been law court cases regarding signage, so we'll take a look at that. It's in the plan.
Okay. Is there any way that I can help or anything, or just, you know, maybe I should call you later, call you and schedule an appointment?
Yeah, well, generally, we, you know, we put together an ordinance draft, kind of show you what we have existing, what we're proposing, why, and then use it on Plan Commission. This would go to the Plan Commission as a discussion, you know, for them to look at it and recommend it to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Laurie, next.
All right, so that's all five of the categories that we wanted to discuss tonight. And in the packet that I gave you, like Chad said, there's a last page budget priorities. If there's anything else that you want to bring to our attention, fill that out and email it to us. I'm going to now put the final, final version of this together. Probably won't have a lot more discussion about it next time. I just want to show you the final version, and we'll say, yep, that's the final version. But as we're in the, in this group, our segue to our, to our next session. Street maintenance and replacement plan with sustainable funding items. And with that, Mayor, I'll let this session go.
Any other questions or comments, the community as a whole?
Thank you, Laurie, for all your hard work.
Let's move on to.
Everybody worked hard on this.
Yeah, and of course, yeah.
And so we're going to move on here, but I guess I want to reiterate what you said. If you have questions or something comes up, you have an idea, fire it to Laurie and to Mark. Make sure it's to Mark, because Laurie's gonna be here just a short time, but something may come up, or something you say, you know, it looked good, but I don't think we need to investigate. All these folks in the room, it really helps them, because then when budget time comes, they can be prepared to help you make, give you the information for you to make informed decisions of what your policy is to vote here or there. So Laurie, let's move on to discussion regarding funding options for long-term street improvement planning.
Okay. Mark, do you want to start this one?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So we've talked a long time about how are we going to continue to fund the street infrastructure improvements that we need, you know, going forward. And we've talked several times over the last couple of years about trying to put together a ten-year plan for improvements. We talked last year and the year before about funding options, including the wheel tax and transportation utilities. And basically, those options aren't viable for us moving forward. So what's left? Basically, we've talked about a ten-year debt financing plan, and then the only real other option that's given to us from the state is to use levy, but with levy limits, the only way we get the dollars for that is through referendum. So we called up Ellers and said, can you put together a comparison for us of what would the cost be if we did a ten-year financing plan through debt, or if we put together a referendum where the dollars we needed each year were coming in through levy? And so Greg's here, he's going to walk through that and kind of give you a little bit more information about the referendum option and the debt option, and then we'll talk some more when he's finished, okay?
Can I, before you start, I don't want to interrupt, but first of all, we're, I think it would be good, especially for some of the two new council members, to give us an idea where we're at right now, because we don't have that in the memo. We're spending a million out of levy for roads, and we're borrowing.
One point eight.
One point eight.
Yeah.
Right now.
Right now.
Every year, we just borrow that, we put that into our yearly package.
Yeah, we find, we're trying to find a way to fund that, and you know, every year we talk about that. And so currently, so with levy limits, I think we're probably one of the few cities out there that still funds some of our street infrastructure through our levy, under levy limits. The most common way to fund street right now is through debt, because with the levy limit law, a way that we can raise those funds is to borrow it, and then the debt service each year is allowed to be added to our levy limit. So our levy limit, we use mostly for operations. In our case, we have about a million dollars worth of streets in there, and another one point three million dollars of capital in their other capital spending. And then everything else, we have to finance or raise funds for, get grants, all those kind of things. So what we're looking to do is, the Public Works Department, Jason, has put together a plan of streets and how much we feel we need to spend each year to get our streets to a certain level. So, and keep them at that level. And so right now, we're at about two point eight million. I think that Jason would like it to be, we're working to get three million or three and a half, basically working our way up to almost four million after ten years. In the current ten-year, we're talking about about two point eight million a year, about thirty million dollars over ten years is what we're looking at. So it'd be thirty million dollars of borrowing, or about two point eight million dollars a year in a referendum.
Can we sustain that, though? Can we?
Yes, and that, and Greg will show you that. So, and we talked about this before with the financing plan. If we're doing a ten-year plan, and we take the debt that we already have, and we start adding new debt to it, the idea is to feather in with the payments that we already have, so that we stay as stable as we can. Now, it's going to go up a little bit for some years, and you'll see that, Greg will show you. And then it kind of gets to a point where it stays, if we continue to do this. By the end of ten years, we get to a point that is pretty similar to what the referendum amount's going to be. Unfortunately, with the referendum amount, it puts it on right now. It doesn't step up over the years. But I want Greg to talk about that and kind of show you both, and then we can talk about it, we can talk about it more.
So I just, I just have one other question, and then I won't say much. Understanding just what has happened over the last few months, did you take that into consideration as far as our ability to acquire the revenue needed, so that we can sustain four million, four and a half, two and a half, whatever it may be? Do you understand my question?
I'm maybe not all the way.
Okay. Well, we can't, there's no way we can, we don't have much more land that we can do anything with.
Well, we're talking about the roads we already have.
Right, but somehow or another, we got to get this money. We have to be able to, to not just, so we can go out, we got great credit right now, we can go out and we can get this money tomorrow.
Right.
They will cut the check for us tomorrow.
Right.
How are we going to pay it back?
And that's what we're going to go through.
That's what he's going to show you.
And so we're going to look at, what's the difference in a tax bill and dollars if we do the referendum, or if we do levy? So when we get, you know, through it all, we kind of want to look at the pros and cons of both and talk about, now, this isn't a decision tonight.
Right, right, right.
This is a discussion.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Right? And even if there was a decision tonight, it couldn't be implemented in 2026. You know, it would have to be worked through in the next year or so, and then we'd move forward. So this is a discussion we've been talking about. I wanted to make sure we had it before I'm not here anymore. And so we got Greg here tonight to go through this, and then we'll talk more.
Thanks, Laurie. Good evening. I'm Greg Johnson from Ellers. I'll walk through the information that was included in your packet. As Laurie mentioned, we're comparing two options that fund the same amount of projects. So in both examples, we're looking at funding street improvement projects of twenty-eight million, looking at the timeframe from 2027 through 2036. So in the first option, we'll look at financing that twenty-eight million of projects with debt over that ten-year planning period. So all the debt each year is amortized over a ten-year period to fund each year's worth of projects. The second option we'll look at is you increase the levy by two point eight million dollars. That will require a levy limit referendum to initially increase your levy by that amount. And then you can keep the levy in place when you do a levy limit referendum, either for an indefinite period of time, or you can specify a number of years that you want that increase to be in place. So say, for example, you did a levy limit referendum for two point eight million dollars that you said would expire in ten years. At the end of that ten-year planning period, under the current levy limit law, you'd have to reduce your levy by two point eight million. So it literally sunsets and goes away. But in both of these scenarios, we're comparing funding ten years' worth of projects, two point eight million per year, so twenty-eight million under both scenarios. So just some timing considerations, just to kind of explain how the model is put together. When we look at debt issuance, we're issuing the debt in the year the projects are completed. So debt issued in 2027 funds 2027 projects. Typically, when you issue debt service in one fiscal year, the payments start the next year. So if you financed issued debt in 2027, completed the projects that year, the principal and interest payments for that financing would start the following year in fiscal year 2028. So as I mentioned, the debt issuance model funds ten years' worth of projects from 2027 through 2036 for a total of twenty-eight million. For the levy limit referendum, the next opportunity any community has to do a levy limit referendum won't be until 2026 for the 2027 budget. The window has already passed this year to do a levy limit referendum for the 2026 budget, so that is not legally an option. So we'll look at the levy option model that funds ten years' worth of projects. If you've got a levy limit referendum for two point eight million dollars, and you left that in place for a ten-year period. Just some background on the legal requirements to do a levy limit referendum. So there's a resolution and a question that needs to be adopted by the common council. If you want to move ahead with a levy limit referendum, you must, in the resolution, state the amount of the levy increase. It's one dollar amount. You can't have a dollar amount with an inflationary adjustment, or one dollar amount one year, and then it increasing in three years. It's not permitted by law, so it is one dollar amount. You have to go through a specified calculation that shows what the percentage increase is over your allowable levy under levy limits. And then you must specify the duration, how long that levy increase is going to remain in place. So your options are for one year, the next fiscal year only, a specified number of years, which would be identified in the question, or it could be ongoing, which means that that levy increase is permanent and gets built into your base budget going forward. So the language that has to appear in that question is all dictated by statute and must be contained in the resolution that's approved by the city council for any referendum. So when can you hold a municipal referendum? An odd number of years. It can only be held as a special election on the same dates used by a school board, or otherwise. It can be held during a spring primary, spring election, or partisan primary or general election. So since we're in an odd number year this year, that kind of explains why that window has passed. So really, the earliest you can do a levy limit referendum is spring of 2026. So in terms of the debt issuance model, we kind of showed, working with staff, kind of a ramp-up of the amount of projects that are funded per year over this ten-year construction cycle. So you'll see the amounts listed here in the chart. And then we estimated interest rates going forward, ranging from four point two five to four point seven five percent per year. So these amounts, if you add them all up, equate to the twenty-eight million dollars of projects that would be funded from 2027 through 2036. We'll go through kind of the tax impact analysis in a moment, but just to kind of quantify the debt service for financing projects from 2027 through 2036. You're looking at principal, which includes the cost of issuance of about twenty-eight million, three hundred forty thousand dollars. And then you're looking at interest expense, you know, that is, that goes out all the way through 2046, because again, each financing is outstanding for a ten-year period. So we broke down the interest that would accumulate, you would accrue from 2028 to 2037, then from 2038 to 2046. But the total interest, if you funded that twenty-eight million worth of projects, over that really kind of twenty-year cycle, is about seven million, five hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. So that's the impact that you're paying for, you know, borrowing that money versus essentially levying for it and paying cash for those improvements.
I have a question. Is that, okay. Just so that I understand this, I think I do, but I'm not certain, so help me here. So in 2028, say we did this, okay? In 2028, we'd have to cut a check for two hundred and seventy-eight thousand and nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Am I correct?
Yes, if you, yes, in 2028, if you, or if you financed projects in 2027 and 2028.
Twenty twenty-eight, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, your principal and interest would be approximately two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So you would levy.
Right.
That amount.
So then in 2029, we'd have to cut a check for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one, plus three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four, or somewhere around six hundred thousand.
Yeah, so if you go to the far right-hand column, your total levy for debt service, that's the cumulative amount of each of these debt issues. That's how much you would need to levy each year for debt service within your budget, just to fund these street improvements.
Right. So we'd have to cut those checks each and every year. So every year, those checks are getting incrementally larger. Okay, thank you.
So if you look at the tax impact of that over, you know, on an annual basis, going all the way from 2028 out through 2046, so these are those total debt service payments that we were just discussing, the annual principal and interest that you would pay that, you know, increases as you go forward, as you finance more projects, and then it starts to kind of level out, and then the payments start to decline. And then the tax rate per thousand shows what you would, your tax rate just for the debt service for the street projects. And then just for an example, if you had a four hundred thirty thousand dollar property, how much they would pay annually in debt service to pay for these, this twenty-eight million dollars of street improvements with the interest that goes all the way out to 2046. So, you know, the question becomes, Laurie, on several of these items, you know, why do communities look at financing, issuing debt to finance capital projects? You know, primary consideration is levy limits. Again, your levy for capital is subject to your allowable levy, which is limited to your percentage increase in net new construction each year. There's no exception to increase your levy to cash fund capital projects, even though financially that would be beneficial. And then you're spreading out this cost. So that, that is spread out, so future generations that also benefit from those road improvements are helping pay the cost. So the next option will look at cash financing, where you avoid the interest expense, but you're going to see the immediate tax impact is going to be greater, because you are having that, a larger levy increase right out of the chute to raise that levy to cash fund your capital projects. So really, you're going to see that immediate impact on your current tax base. But this shows, you know, over the planning period, all the way out through 2046, four hundred thirty thousand of value would pay approximately two thousand five hundred eighty dollars for debt service over that period to fund twenty-eight million worth of projects. So if we look at the alternative to issuing debt, and essentially you just levied two point eight million dollars for a ten-year period to cash finance that twenty-eight million dollars of street investment, you'll see, you know, over, it really, that impact ends in 2036, because you're not amortizing debt over, you know, a longer period of time. So the total cost of four hundred thirty thousand of valued property is about two thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars. And we'll summarize this on a slide in a moment, but you'll see that impact to your. And we'll summarize this on a slide in a moment, but you'll see that impact to your $430,000 home is much greater right out of the chute because instead of a more modest gradual-growing levy increase for debt service, you're increasing your levy immediately by $2.8 million, and you retain that levy authority through a referendum going forward. So that increase in year one for a $430,000 valued property is $291. So in terms of that initial tax rate impact, so in that first year, when you're issuing debt, that tax rate per thousand is about six cents per thousand of value, so that's a $28 increase for a $430,000 property. Versus if you do a levy limit referendum, at least in that first year, that tax rate's estimated to be 68 cents per thousand. So that's a annual increase of $291,000 for that same valued property of $430,000. So again, the initial impact in year one varies significantly between the two options, largely just due to debt, more gradually increasing that levy, but you're paying interest in addition to the principal amount versus the levy limit referendum, where you're not paying interest, but you have to absorb that increase kind of right away in year one for the full amount. So just again, kind of looking at that overall comparison, so really the difference is, you know, interest expense. If you can, you know, stomach kind of increasing the levy to kind of cash fund capital projects from a strict financial standpoint, that's the preferable option because you avoid interest expense. But again, there's that initial tax rate impact that's going to vary significantly between these two options. But it shows kind of over the full planning period what the cost difference is to a $430,000 home. Between debt issuance and a levy limit referendum, it's about a $242 difference. So as was mentioned, this is really just intended for a discussion item, to kind of give you really your two primary options to do significant street infrastructure investments. Either, you know, kind of continuing to issue debt and possibly seeing that ramp up over time to kind of keep up with your infrastructure demands, or to go through a levy limit referendum, request authority to increase your levy to specifically fund street improvement projects and cash finance that over time. So that's kind of the overview of the two options. I'll see your, Mark, Lori, you had anything you wanted to add?
Well, I mean, so.
Kevin has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I have two concerns, and they're just my concerns, probably maybe not anybody else's. With us doing the levy limits at 2.8 million every year for 10 years, this also means that our taxes are going to be going up in some form for those 10 years.
Either way.
Right. Regardless, the other thing that I see here is that over that 10-year time period, our debt for the city is also going to increase substantially. Now, whereas, I'm just going to put this in my own layman's terms. You have $100,000 of money available to you on your credit card. That doesn't necessarily mean that you got to spend $100,000. Or maybe you have nothing right now, and now, well, if I have $28,000 on my card, it's not a big deal. But it is a big deal if it doesn't have to be done that way. There's, there's got to be another way in which we can do this, where we can keep the taxes low and we can get the roads done the way they need to be. And I, I don't know what that is. But this really concerns me because we're increasing our, our debt, $28 million. Now, over the long haul, maybe it's not a big deal. But to me, as a homeowner, okay, it is a big deal. Because that means my taxes are automatically going to go up. And regardless if we use debt or if we use levy, it's, my taxes are going to go up. And at the end of the day, that's how we're going to get the money. So there's got to be a, a, another way in which we can do this. These may be the easier ways to do it, but I, I don't know. That's, that's only my thought.
Alderman Rozek?
The numbers we're looking at make almost no sense to me because right now, we're already borrowing 1.8 million. Right?
Correct.
So, so we, we've got this model that we're being shown right now of the 2.8 million spend, or, or the levy, either way we go. We're right now already borrowing short-term on the 1.8 that we've been doing for a couple of years. So it's, it's much less. We're actually only talking about borrowing an extra million, not the full 2.8. We're already borrowing 1.8.
It's just how you structure it.
Well, you're right.
Well, I understand that, but.
You're right, but it's still showing what it's going to cost.
I, I.
It's a comparison.
It's a comparison to, between the two models, but both models are flawed because we're not showing the actual difference. Because we're already borrowing one, we're already, we're already being taxed for the 1.8 million we're borrowing right now in short-term money.
He's looking for the gap between what we're doing now.
I understand what you're saying. And the thing is, we don't have authority from council right now to borrow another 1.8 next year or the year after that.
Right, right. You get that year-to-year in the budget cycle, and we can increase that or decrease that right now. So if we have a bigger road project, we could borrow, we could agree to borrow 2.2, we could also, we could all.
And we did that when we did that pre-trump.
Right. And we can also go down, and we can say, we only want to spend 2.2. The problem with tying us into all this too, in my opinion, is if Act 10 gets overruled, which means levy limit increases get overruled, we're now stuck into a borrowing where we've got 7 million in interest we pay out over that time period.
And you're never, I mean, you're not, we're showing you the effect over 10 years.
The other bigger que.
Four years from now, if you don't want to borrow it, you don't have to.
We're not locked into a 10-year note?
No, we're not doing, what we're showing you is.
You borrow every year.
2.8 million borrowing every year for 10 years.
Okay.
It's not one go-bond.
It's not one.
Okay, well, that, then that, and that wasn't really clear to me from the presentation. I thought we were buying, purchasing into a full 10 or 15 or 20-year note. Regardless of that.
No.
We're already borrowing 1.8 now. So really, our increase is only, we're really, really only talking about a million increase in borrowing. And I'd like to, what's the important number for us is what we're spending right now in the borrow. And if we add the million, what that is. It's really going to be only an extra 30 bucks a house.
But that isn't true, because if we stop borrowing, it's going to go down.
Well, of course, but we, but we can't stop borrowing right now because of what we're doing with the roads.
And that's what this is saying.
And then that's the point here. The point is, one way or another, we're spending 2.8 million, about $2.8 million a year. So how.
I understand that.
How much is the cost to fund those?
But we're already, but we have been borrowing 1.5, 1.7, 1.8 for, for many, many years. I don't foresee, based on the discussions with Jason, that that's going to go down. So we're likely going to have to make decisions every year. I personally prefer the councils being able to make those decisions year-to-year on that, instead of just having the blanket 2.8 million borrowing. Because in my head, what happens is once you've got the money and the cash in hand, you figure out a way to spend it, and it might not be something you need. It also gives us less flexibility if we want to do something like Conomark Parkway or like Lake Bluff Drive. Now, we can't go out and say, okay, this year, we're going to borrow 3.1 million, next year, it's only going to be 1.2 because we have a large project we want to finish at one time. The other question, the other big thing hanging over my mind, what is the plan for the other million bucks? So if we're not going to use the cash out of the levity to fund the roads, what, what are we using the million bucks for? Are we using it for other operational? Because for the last four or five years, I've seen us put a lot of money back into general fund reserves. Every year, we've over-budgeted, and a lot of that's interest. I get that over the last couple of years. But we have had money going into the general fund reserve for as long as I've been on council.
Right.
Being deposited.
And at this time, we are not proposing any of those dollars be moved to operations. What we are seeing is those dollars are available to move to operations if it becomes necessary.
Well, we could do that, but here's the thing is, in this, and so I, I like the presentation. It's still, I still would like to see the actual difference between what we're already borrowing and what we're proposing to anyway, what that number is.
He's wanting to see where we are today.
Yeah.
What the borrow would be after that.
It's not really 291. It's going to be much less because we're already borrowing a huge chunk of that. We're already borrowing 2/3 of it right now.
His model shows you how much it's going to cost if we continue to do this every year.
Right. Oh, I get that. I get that.
So it really does start with today. Can you bring your model back?
Sure.
It starts with where we are right now. You didn't show the whole amount. I've seen it.
I've said enough for now. I think I've made my point, that we're already borrowing the 1.8.
Yep.
So we're, I mean, people shouldn't freak out if they're looking at this and saying, oh my God, they're going, this is going to be another $291. We're already doing 2/3 of that right now. We have been for years.
It's just which bucket are you taking it from? How does it affect daily operations?
Yep.
And how do we keep a positive cash flow? And this is just, these are just funding options.
It's just an exercise to show you. We've heard a lot of times people talking about the amount of interest that we pay. You know, and so we were trying to show you something that we wouldn't be using. We wouldn't be accumulating interest expense. However, it goes against some of the things that we talked about before. We talk about borrowing for 10 years because the person that lives in this house right now isn't paying that whole 2.8 million this year. We're spreading it out over 10 years. So people that move here, six years from now, are paying for these roads as well, not just the people that lived here today.
And in principle, principle that, that does make sense, right, if you think about it. But if you also continue to think about us having to still build roads for the next 100 years, we're going to have to continue to do that, whether it's a 30-year borrow, 10-year, 5-year. You know, now, there could be a council someday that says, we don't want to spend any money on roads. I mean, that's certainly possible. It happened before I was on council. They just stopped, like, spending money on roads, and then we had to catch up, which is what we did, the advanced street projects for several years.
Any other questions for Greg and, and?
Oh, did anybody else get to speak?
I think Matt was still.
But that's okay.
Oh, I thought you were done. I'm sorry, Matt was, was waiting.
No, I, Matt's been chomping at the bit over there.
You said you were done, and then you weren't done.
Yeah, I know.
He was Rozek done.
Rozek done.
That's a new term.
And then there's Rozek duns.
So a couple of things. None of this is inflation-adjusted. So if we need $2.8 million right now, that's actually $3.8 million in 10 years. So both of these are woefully underfunding what we actually need. I don't like, I don't like the referendum for that very reason because we're going to be, six years into it, we're going to be like, well, shit, we're a million dollars short, sorry, this year. And then you can't go back for a referendum again. And I don't think when we have, I, I don't think it's appropriate to be doing a referendum right now when we have the kind of reserves we have and we're already paying a million dollars in cash. It just feels like we're asking money additional when it's not really needed yet. And it, it just feels like that, that the annual, you know, go-note is the right way to do it because it gives us that flexibility.
You said, what's the right way?
To do, to do the, like, we've been doing, right. We borrow what we need. And we, we, because we're going to get, we're going to have to borrow more, to your point. You know, we don't have any guarantee now that we're landlocked, you know, a couple of down years with, with no net new construction every year. If inflation is 4%, and we do a 4% cola, and we get 2% net new construction, we've lost 1% of our purchase value right there just because of 65% of our spend is on people. So we just have to remain really, really flexible, and I don't think the referendum does that for us. So I think, I think having this flexibility every year, even though it's, it's carrying debt, I, I think it, I think the referendum leaves future councils in a really bad situation.
What about your, what's your thoughts, though, on the million of what we're using on a levy right now for the road spend? Do we just stay flexible, and like, if we have a year where we need 500 grand for a new plow truck because one blew up on us or something, we just do it then?
I think we should do everything we can to not use that for something else, right? It's really easy. Found a million dollars, what is our operating budget, 15 million? So that's like a 8% raise we just gave ourselves because now we're going to fund, that million is going to be, we're going to put debt instead and spend that on stuff we want to spend it on. So I think we have to be really careful.
Right.
Not to spend that.
Yeah.
And to continue to fund roads as long as we can, using that million dollars. And using.
And maybe, maybe from time to time, right, you, we need, you know, 300 of, out of that, we borrow a little more one year, we use 300 grand to buy the new plow truck, or to put, you know, maybe there's a new fire truck we need or something, and we have to put $300,000 in capital for that.
What you're, what we're hearing is, we want to have, council wants to have that annual flexibility. Also, what, from a finance standpoint, we want to buffer by staging all of this so that it has the least impact on the tax owner.
Correct.
And it's not fair for people for, on a short-term note, to have to pay for something, and then other people come to the community, and they, they don't get hit with it at all. So I think there's going to have to be that sweet spot, but that, I think, unless I'm hearing incorrectly, we want to have that flexibility, but we want to keep things as stable as possible.
And that's really the point of this discussion. It's not to talk you into a referendum. It's to show you how much it's going to cost if we do that. You're saving interest, but you're making a larger cost to the taxpayer right away.
Right now.
And you, like you said, lose some of the flexibility. But you need to see it. You know, you need to see it because it's an option. And it's maybe not an option today, but maybe it is an option down the road. I want, I just want you to know about it because there's not that many ways we have to be able to fund anything like that.
And what are the chances even that a community is passing a referendum for streets like this? Have you seen this happen?
It's not too common that communities are doing cash financing of cap, long-term infrastructure. Most of the levy limit referendums are operational in nature, day-to-day services. Particular emphasis on public safety.
Emergencies.
Well, Greg, thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate, appreciate the analysis, and our comments are there because we're learning, so thank you very much.
Understood.
Lori, anything else you want to share?
No, I don't. I, I just wanted to have Greg comment and give you this comparison. So it's just something to think about, not maybe today, but in the future.
Yeah.
You got to kind of get it in your head and understand how it works.
Does it, with the numbers that we talked about, how much does it increase our debt percentage? I'm thinking minimal? Is it, oh, was it, was it on one of these?
Yes, the forecast.
Oh, we have that. It's maybe not in there, but we do have that.
Okay.
Well, thank you guys very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Department heads, thank you very much. Really appreciate your hard work. Also would like to just mention to thank all of our police officers. Last week was National Police Week. Chief, thank you very much and for your service to our community. It's also, this week is Public Works Week and Fire Week. So Chief and our Public Works folks, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you going to take a break?
Let's take a two-minute break, and then we'll start with the common council meeting. Let's take a two-minute break, and then we'll start with the common council meeting. Call to order, the City of Oconomowoc Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
Great. If we would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Would you please call roll?
Alderman Rosick?
Here.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Here.
Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Here.
Alderman Mulder?
Alderman Shellpepper?
Here.
Alderman McConnell?
Here.
Alderman Youngworth?
Here.
Without objection, I'd like to bring forth item 118A, the mayoral appointment to the Tourism Commission. Do we have any objection from council? Like to introduce Catherine Briss. Catherine has filled out an application. It's in your packet. Catherine, if you'd please come up to the podium to serve on our tourism. You've done some wonderful things. I know you know everybody. You've come here a few times.
Yes, hello, everybody.
And for those that aren't aware, Catherine and her husband run Mont Bejou, or Inum Pine Terrace, have just done a spectacular job and have really invested in the community. So the tourism board is something that's really Bob Duffy's animal. So Bob, do you have any comments or anything to share? And council, do you have any questions for Catherine?
Always looking for good people, great ideas to continue to promote.
I am here to serve my country.
Well, thank you, Catherine. And for, for the new Alderman, the Tourism Board has certain requirements of types of people and the businesses that they're in that can serve on the board, and Catherine's doing that from the hospitality aspect or the hotel aspect. So thank you very much. And questions or comments?
Thank you for agreeing to serve.
Of course, it's my pleasure.
And thank you for coming back.
Of course.
It's a fun board. You're going to have a lot of fun. It's a great group of people.
I'm really looking forward to it.
I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So moved, Rosick.
Second, Ellis.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rosick?
We'll see how you do.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
Great. Quick question off the agenda. When is the opening of the new, new changes to your facility?
We are hoping for mid-June.
Mid-June?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And thank you for serving.
Okay.
I will get you all set up and get you up to date for a next meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, we're going to go on to our public hearing. The public hearing is for the Market Square PD Amendment. The purpose of the public hearing is to amend the existing Market Square Plan Development Overlay, the property located at 1690 Old School House Road and has an existing plan development overlay, PD 1006. The request is to increase the maximum established building footprint area within the condominium unit number seven within the development. If approved, the applicant intends to exceed the allowable of 5,666 square feet in order to construct a dental office building with a footprint of 6,200, 6,327 square feet. The building area increased of 661 square feet from which it was initially approved. So Mr. Gallo, if you can give us just an overview synopsis, then we'll take any comments from those in the audience.
Sure, thank you. I'll, Mayor Alderman, I'll give a brief presentation on this public hearing that you have, that you just read. Market Square, you're all familiar where it is. It's on the Valley Road and Summit Avenue. It's outlined in yellow here. We have the Firestone, the Qdoba, mixed-use buildings with Mod Pizza and US Bank. And by the yard is this development. This was created in about 2006 as a planned development. It's a condominium called Valley Road Condominium. Tonight, we're talking about this red area outlined. It's currently a vacant area. It does have parking right next to it, but it's grass. If you haven't been there, it's just an empty space. They would like to put this building on it. They came to me and said, "We'd like to build this building." It's somewhere between 6,300 and 6,400 square feet. So it's at, the address of that little parcel is 1672 Old School House Road. They've presented the elevations. All of these have gone to the Architectural Commission. They were fully approved. They're waiting for action on tonight from this body. They've presented a site plan. This has gone through the Plan Commission. It was approved contingent upon action of amending the PD. There's, the building will basically take up the entire green space area that's remaining. The parking designated out front here is for the building to go here. As I said, there's a long history with this. Initially, unit seven, where we're talking about tonight, was not there. It was part of some square footages on these units, but then they amended the condo plat to add this, to take the square footage off of here and put it in that area. When they did that in 2010, four years after the initial approvals, they said, "We'd like to propose," and this was MSI General back then in 2010, "to change, take some of the square footage away and create Building 4B out in the parking lot, and we'll put it at, we'll cap it at 5,666 square feet." So that's the building 4B. And they were taking some square footage from a different building and, and moving it over. So this became 4B. It came off of Building 4, and there you can see the 6,000 or 5,666 square feet. So when they came to me and said, "Now they want to build a new building on this area, Building 4B area or Unit 7," I said, "I don't have the authority to go against what prior councils approved on the PD back in 2010." So I said, "We'll have to amend the PD." You do that with a public hearing, which we're holding right now. It's on the agenda later this evening. When we amend the PD, you know, when we established that square footage, not only did it, did it fit in that little area, the hatch pattern, but we looked at, you know, how big is this? What's, we didn't know the, what the use would be, but we looked at, you know, how big, how square footage. And with this new building, this is the dental clinic. There's a few offices in there, a lot of treatment rooms, some labs, conference room, et cetera. Plan Commission talked about what kind of constraint will this cause to the parking out there? They created a, a parking analysis, and they went out and they counted stalls, and they did more than just count stalls. They looked at every building, square footage, the use, what was needed, and they ended up claiming that this really is overparked, this area. So what does that mean? It means that there's plenty of parking on-site in the areas. It's just this area here might be parked up during peak times. So if you want to go to the dentist, you might have to park, you know, a little further over and walk, you know? But you have to remember, yes, they have a lot of offices in here, but the way that it was explained at Plan Commission is there's only a certain number of dentists, and once you leave a treatment room, that room then gets cleaned by staff. And so, you know, you're not going to have people in every room at the same time. They also talked about entering into an agreement for parking for their employees to park. By the yard doesn't use all their parking to have a shared parking agreement and then have their staff walk across this private drive here and get into the area there. We even talked about removing some of the landscaping down here so the, it would be more safer for people to walk over there from across that private drive. So the lighting plan is very consistent without what's being, they're not adding a lot of new poles out there. There were some concerns about the dumpster and the transformer. The dumpster and transformer, we didn't really talk much about that. It's going to, they don't have room on their site because it's all going to be a footprint, so they are sharing this. They have a shared dumpster agreement with the property to the, to the west. They are adding a transformer. They're going to be losing one parking stall for that because initially the transformer was going to go over here, but there was visibility issues and some other things about how close it could be to the, to the street. So we, we ended up getting rid of, moving that, and our utilities have signed off on the new dumpster location and the transformer. So the only real amendment that I, I figured was needed was to change this and add the Plan Commission determined size of the building on 4B. Unit seven of the condo may be increased to a size not to exceed 6,400 square feet in building area. So that was, was added to the PD, and I added the word Market Square because it was, wasn't known as Market Square back then. Plan Commission did recommend approval of the amendment to the GDP, and they also approved the site plan. It is on the agenda tonight for your, your action.
So at this time, is there any comments from the public on this issue? If the public hearing is open, if you'd like to make a comment, please fill out a blue card and give it to Mr. Gallo. I'm happy to hear your concerns or your support of this project. Not seeing anything or hearing anything, this public hearing is now closed, and there are no comments have been made. This item will then come to the council later in this evening on the agenda. Like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from May 6, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time, we have comments and suggestions from citizens. Are there any comments or some suggestions from citizens in the audience today? Seeing no comments, but a lot of people with folded arms. Seeing no comments, we'll move on to our next, next item. That's a little better.
Still folded, just over somebody.
It's just a cold day today.
I'd like to entertain a motion for the four consent agenda items in Item 7.
So moved. Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And on to committee reports. We'll start with Protection Welfare. Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3282 granting a six-month Class B liquor license to RNS Hospitality, AKA Buddy's Beach Bungalow. Gina?
Sure. So this was reviewed at Protection and Welfare Committee this evening. This is a Class B six, it's been issued as a six-month license for Buddy's Beach Bungalow that operates the concession stand at City Beach. There's an updated concession agreement in place that was approved by this council in September of 2024. And typically, they operate from Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend, although the committee this evening revised or offered a revision to the resolution to add 30 days to either side of that, so that is their recommendation.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
So do you need, real quick, do you need the motion to be stated with the extra 30 days or just as it was?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Buddy's liquor license with an additional 30 days on each side.
Do I have a second? Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Clothe?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
On to our next item, we're going to move to Plan Commission. Consider Act on the Revised Architectural Building Plans for the Elevate Building located at 1350 Olympia Fields Drive. Mr. Gallo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have updated building plans on the agenda this evening. I'll walk you through those and the plans, and we have, the applicant is here as well to answer any questions. We all know where the Elevate Building is. It's the, the name of the building that's going right by the roundabout off Papst Road when you pull in on that corner. We've seen this building before, and you've approved it. So the initial PD for some of the members that maybe weren't on the council at the time, we approved a PD, which is a planned development. It allowed an increase in building height out there in exchange for an architectural design that had some features built in, including a step back on the top floor. Later, the council amended that requirement because they came back and said, "We will step back areas, but we're asking for a varied step back." So not the whole top floor has to be stepped in five feet. About a year ago, in April, the building was approved by the Architectural Commission as well as the Common Council. It's a requirement of the PD that the building design and the materials come before you guys. Then they took it out for bid, and due to the construction costs, the applicant's asking for a reapproval this evening of the revised drawings. The Architectural Commission looked at this already on May 7, and they did approve it. They kind of put in your packet the request and the rationale and all of the specific changes. I won't go through all of those in this fashion, but here is basically the two buildings, the proposed and the submitted. The prior approval is on top, and what they're asking for is on the bottom. It doesn't, you know, from the common person, it doesn't look much different. The big thing, I talked about that step back on the top floor. You can see they're pointing here, and they're saying the, the submitted revised elevation has no step back in this corner versus the earlier one did. The other big change is the overhang was like four feet, and they've cut it in half to a two-foot overhang. And then the, the stone on the bottom, they're changing that to brick. And then there was some window treatments that are changing slightly. I mean, it doesn't look a lot different. The Architectural Commission felt it was still in the spirit of the craftsman style, and they went ahead and approved it as submitted. The elevation on the backside, again, the, the prior plan that you had previously approved is on top. This is what the, the submitted. Doesn't look much different, but when you start, you know, they called out, sort of being very transparent of all of the changes, the overhangs that I mentioned, the balconies are a little bit different, reduced the covered entry a little bit in the front, and some of the stonework and some of the step backs on the top floor again. So that's the, the backside. I can always bring these back up. Again, prior, and then what was submitted, these are the, the front on the west. This is the front in the east. You can see the prior and then the submitted. Doesn't look too different, but there, you know, here's some more windows, and then here's, it could, not quite as much. So there's, there's some slight changes, but we just, when we knew the step back was such a, an important discussion topic by the council, we decided, you know, I took it upon myself, said, "Yeah, this is enough that it should come back. This is a very important building, but the council should know what's going on out there, that there are changes." Here is the, the side where you go in underground for the underground parking. You can see there's some slight changes. This was the prior approved. It had two garage doors and two service doors. Now you're down to one garage door and one. Very minor changes, but I thought it was important enough to, to share all this with you. I recommend approval of the revised architectural plans for the Elevate Building.
So I'd like it opened up for discussion. If you have questions for Mr. Gallo, we also have the applicant here. Alderman Ellis?
So can you go back to the east and west, looking at the buildings? All right. That's the front. Can I see the west? Now, the west is the one that's not facing 67, am I correct?
Right, this is facing Papst Road.
Okay. And what is going to be down on the bottom level?
Those that's residential use. They only have the commercial or non-residential use on the, on the east side.
Okay.
Other questions from council members? Any questions? Alderman Spiegelberg?
I think it looks great.
I think it looks great.
Well, I know this would cut off a significant amount of money, so we understand that. Does the applicant have any comments? If you could please identify yourself when you come to the podium.
Sure, Matt Maroney with Wonga Partners, thanks for having me again today. We appreciate working with the city staff. Our instructions to the architect is we need to find at least a million dollars, but we didn't want to try to change the look of the building at all because we had worked hand in hand with the Architectural Commission and I think designed a beautiful building and we thought we achieved that. You know, we've made changes that really moved the needle on costs. It's about a million dollars that we're saving by making these changes and, you know, and we're still very proud of the building and think it'll represent the city of Oconomowoc well.
A million dollars off of?
Off of the, the top version, so top to bottom.
I'm, I'm talking total cost of the?
Oh, total cost. So this is where we have to take the next step. These are all based off design level drawings. We don't have construction level detailed drawings yet. So with, we're getting ready to release that and go out to bid, but, so it was like 37 million all in with everything that we had to do with the top one and it's like 36. So it was about 1.1 million, you know, off rough, rough estimates. But we really get the final cost when we go out with construction level documents, so.
My only comments of the changes seem very minor aesthetically. Frankly, the, the larger overhangs probably wouldn't have looked as good. I think four-foot overhangs are big and the fact that they're kind of back a little, to me, actually looks better. So I, I really don't have any issue with the changes. I think it's, it's gonna be a good-looking building too, like Alderman Spiegelberg said.
Well, it's really the, on the overhangs especially, it's really the structural part of it. For every foot of overhang, we gotta go back two feet to anchor it and so you're eating up a ton of space, adding a ton of cost on those, the overhangs. But we kept the front overhang at four foot because that's your money shot as you're driving into the development and we thought that was very, very important to keep that look as you're coming in.
Like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman McConnell?
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth?
Aye.
Next up is Consider Act on the Final Plat for Arrowood Phase Four being an extension of Arrowood Circle West and Elderberry Road. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, we have a final plat for Arrowood subdivision. It's located here on Concord Road, Valley Road, Oconomowoc Parkway. This is phase four, so it's been under construction for some time now. This is the approved preliminary plat, so you can kind of see the, the approximate 300 lots out there right now. Tonight, we're talking about the area highlighted in, in red, so it goes out to the Concord Road. It's a continuation of these two, two streets here. There's a total of 20, or I'm sorry, 34 single-family lots in this phase and that's this area up in here, 34 single-family lots. And then this area is 12 twin homes, well, there's actually 24 units because those are kind of like a duplex, they have a zero lot line. So these lots look very small, but they're, they're, they're shared with the, the home going right through the lot line. So they have no zero side yard setback on that one side. So these are the single-family homes up here, these would be the twin homes down here. It's consistent with the preliminary plat. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this development.
Questions or comments, Alderman Rosick?
How are the twin homes counted with our apartment to single-family residential ratio? Are they considered single-family or they considered apartments? I mean, they're owned, right?
I believe they're, yeah, I believe I, I would have to double check so I can email all the council, but I think I put them as 300 single-family homes because they are owner-occupied. It's just a setback issue.
Really more of a setback thing, I mean, but they're really right next to each other.
They're right next to each other.
They're one, they share a common wall.
Like a duplex.
Okay. And when we, when we went through our ratio, this was all part of proposed residential at the time when we were looking at a ratio, this was part of the numbers of what we expected for single-family?
Oh yeah, this is all included in the, in the calculations.
All right, thanks.
Did they address the sidewalk?
Well, the sidewalk issue, I reached out and the applicant is, is here, who was at Plan Commission as well. There's a little bit of a misunderstanding. I asked if the sidewalk, you know, was gonna go along Concord Road and he said it will be going along, out to Concord Road. This is their, their plan that they said that we approved with the PD and their sidewalk going out to Concord Road, but they are really concerned about the request that we had to put sidewalk along Concord Road. I thought this, this color here meant that there was a sidewalk, but this is a county trunk highway. There's no sidewalk to the north, there's no sidewalk to the south, but it is vacant land over there. We're talking about, this is vacant, this is the project we're talking about right now. This is vacant, this is owned by the, a different owner and then it doesn't go anywhere. It is a county trunk highway. They are concerned and I said, "Well," I talked to our Director of Public Works, I said, "This should probably go in a developer's agreement that the sidewalk be put in here." There's concern by the developer that they don't really want to do that. That was not their understanding when the PD was approved. They had a trail and sidewalk plan approved, so I, I don't know, it has not been resolved.
Okay, because I, I mean, what I'm looking at is I don't want to have another issue like we have in front of Hackney House. That's a, that's a county road as well and this is a county road. Then eventually these will become city roads, I'm sure at some point in time.
Well, at that point, we expanded a lot of the sidewalk along Concord in the last road project out there and tried to connect stuff out there and why would we not force developers? I mean, look at what we had to do with Thackeray Trail. Those developers way back then didn't put sidewalks in all those roads and we ended up footing the bill to repair the road and put sidewalks in. So, I mean, if you think sidewalks are, the only reason they don't want to do it is they don't want to spend the money. Let's face it, they just don't want to spend the extra, you know, whatever, 20, 30 grand to build the sidewalk. And if we think your sidewalk should be there, I think we should tell them.
But I think that should be a discussion point. That's a discussion point we had at, at Plan Commission, but we just didn't have clarity. We do have the applicant here, which is great. One of the things we've looked at, I think it was in, Bob, what was the year that they did the survey for the community? That basically the number one thing was interconnectivity and it was 2019 or something? But in the survey analysis, community service analysis, you know, that was one of the number one things is to try to get that connectivity. We also had made a, a formal request that they did at Morgan Station. I drive past that all the time and be amazed at the number of people that walk on that because in a sense, it's basically a sidewalk to nowhere because it's the beginning of a long-term plan to get back to Silver Lake School. So, you know, if the applicant could come up, I would, I would think that we would like to request that you put in that sidewalk and respectfully request, if you could come up, that would be great.
Prior to him speaking, there, you know, we're not done. This is not the final approval of this development, you know? The way of a stubbed road here, this is gonna continue. There's gonna be future plats, future developers' agreements. Another idea that we had was potentially escrowing the money if they don't want to put it in right now. You know, if it does lead to nowhere, so there, there's a lot of options that you guys can go, but I'll turn it over to Ben from Veridian.
So when you look at that area too, if you look at where the sidewalk could potentially go, it doesn't go anywhere to the north and to the south, but those are all developable areas and it should happen at some point in time. Sir?
Hi there, Ben Lang with Veridian Homes, thank you for having us tonight. So Jason did a really good job of outlining and while I'm fairly new to the project here, talked to some folks that are more familiar from the inception of this project. We're going on a couple of years now and, you know, hit it on the head. You know, we were not anticipating building the trail or sidewalk along Concord Road. We are well underway on the infrastructure on this project, which is why we're here for the final, or on this phase, which is why we're here for the final plat tonight. And neither, I would say neither are drawings, bids or development agreement considered this sidewalk or trail along this, this portion.
And we understand that, we're just making a request and so my, my question to you is, are you willing to put in a sidewalk?
I think we would like to.
Can I say something?
Just one second.
Because I think because this hearing tonight is for the final plat and not a developer's agreement or any sort of design drawings, we'd like the opportunity to maybe revisit that offline and figure out how to do that with a future phase rather than absorbing that cost within this phase.
Understood. Alderman Altman-Cloth?
I guess I don't completely understand the, and I hate to go against you two, but the point of putting a sidewalk right there, because it's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere. There's no schools that way, there's no cool parks, there's nothing. But this neighborhood, which is essentially kind of next to where I live, has great access to the Lake Country Trail, which takes you to the library, takes you to, you know, downtown. It gives you that connectivity to all of the great resources of Oconomowoc. You know, we have Silver Lake School right there. If you live in this, in this area, you go to Summit, which, I'm not gonna get beat up here. Take Valley Road. But in terms of walkability, bikeability, you know, things like that, a sidewalk on Concord makes no sense. It really doesn't and I, I just.
I would, I would agree with you at this point in time. The question is, do you want to do this as a planning tool so they can continue and so something can be connected within the next 10 years? That's the question that you as a council have to decide. It's not in that we're reviewing this plat and that's accurate and it's something I think that we missed because I, I think it's really, really important to get that connectivity. We also look at Concord Road as a mayor, major thoroughfare going through there and as you get more people in that area, if we can connect those sidewalks, it's gonna really improve the public safety. Alderman Ellis?
I just don't think it's gonna be used.
At, at this point, I actually agree with Jennifer, I don't believe it is gonna be used and I like, I like your idea and that is to begin the process of looking at it for the future projects instead of currently at this point. I, I like the connectivity of the trails more so than I do of Concord at that point because it's literally going to go nowhere and it's gonna be, and I saw. But to your point, Bob, I do understand looking at it in the future and saying, "Is it possible at all to at least entertain the, the request?"
So take a look at Valley Road.
Right.
Take a look in front of the apartments.
Right.
Take a look at where there are no sidewalks and that has a lot of development there. And what happens is we, as a city, do we want to end up paying for it later? That's the question. So you guys can make whatever decision you want to look, look at.
May I just add a little bit more color on, you know, Alderman Rosick hit it on the head. It is, it is costly. With our preliminary estimates, we're looking, if this is not a six-figure request, it's nearing a six-figure request for that addition of the sidewalk. And we are providing a lot of trails and interconnectivity within the development. I certainly can understand the desire for interconnectivity outside of the development, but at this phase of the project, you know, we have less and less homes that we can distribute that cost amongst. And the spirit of this PUD was to promote attainability and really affordability for home buyers. And so we're, we're trying to be very conscious of the cost we're adding to the project. And so I think we are, we can look at it, but you know, it's one of those, can we look at another area within the trail plan where if this is a desire by the council to have this interconnectivity exterior, is there some interconnectivity interior that maybe is a lower priority to the council where we can try to balance that out? Because the more homes we sell, the less homes that we're able to recapture and so those home prices are gonna have to increase by a greater amount through the remaining life of the project.
And then when these other areas to the south and then north get developed, who's gonna pay for it? The city taxpayer. So if you're looking at 70, $80,000 expense to do that over how many homes? If you can't afford that, then you have a problem. That's my position. We're gonna end up with the exact same situation we have with the Hackney House on Valley Road. I mean, it's already happened, you guys.
But the Hackney House, I get your point for Hackney House because to have connectivity from Hackney to the Y to, you know, pick and save, whatever, that actually makes a lot of sense. Connectivity on Concord is connectivity to nowhere.
Into the city.
No, to nowhere. They have the, they have the best connectivity on the Lake Country Trail.
Depends where they go, they may just go right down Concord Road into town. What happens is, we, we can, I agree that there's no connectivity now. This is a long-term strategy and the question is, who do you want to pay for it? Do you want the city taxpayer to pay for it or do you want the developer to pay for it? And that's, that's my only point and I'll let you guys argue it, I'm, I'm out. Yeah.
I think we should address it now and keep it open as an option, even if we don't develop it at this time, but to keep that open as an option and then as those other areas are developed, then maybe, you know, we're looking at shooting it through and, and having it connect more to the downtown area. But, you know, again, sorry, you know, on your back and not the taxpayer's back.
Ches?
Yeah, I see it as a long-term investment, just like the Morgan Station sidewalk right now. That's a sidewalk to nowhere that people utilize still.
They use it a lot.
That eventually will connect with the other undeveloped land that runs to Concord Road. So eventually that Morgan Station sidewalk will run to Concord Road hopefully and then people would be able to walk down that entire strip. So whether it's an escrow account or put in on the front end, I, I agree with you completely, Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, this is not to be confrontation with you. I did share this with you two weeks ago. Alderman Ellis, I mean, Rosick.
Rosick is fine, Matt.
Rosick, Ellis, you know, we're all the same.
So I, I do, I would like to see the sidewalk as well, but I think what I'm hearing from Ben and my point before is they, they can't do it now because of the expense. Most of this development is already done, so essentially the new homes would have to bear all the cost of that per parcel. If we forgot to ask it or we weren't clear about it, that's on us. But I think there is this option of either escoring or talking about the next portion of the development. Because you guys are gonna develop the next portion up to the Oconomowoc, is that the, I think that's Oconomowoc River there.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right, you guys are gonna develop the next portion. I, I think what we need, we should do is maybe as part of this vote or just a kind of a gentleman's agreement to address it with the next development to complete that structure along Concord. When that one, when they do a developer's agreement, we can insist that that go all the way to the other end of development.
When I think at, at the least amount, I mean, our request would be to have an easement so that we could be, could be put in in the future, which nothing exists at this point. But the problem is who pays for it? And what you have is you have a lot of sidewalks that don't ever get built because we don't have the funds to build it. And so to me, this is a time to act, but I respect what, I expect what you said.
Well, I, I don't, yeah, no, I, I think we should absolutely have it. I, but I think somehow along the line here, we screwed up, just like we did with Hackney House and just like we've done with some other developments over the years, all the way back to Thackeray Trail. We didn't demand those developers put in sidewalks because when Thackeray Trail first went in, there was nothing else out there either and we ended, ended up with hodgepodge. Our problem is, is ethically, morally, if we forgot to ask it, I, I don't know that we can ask them to do it now. And that's, that's where I struggle with this.
Well, I think there's a misunderstanding because we did want that connection.
Yeah.
But we misinterpreted or they misinterpreted. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter, it's how can we move it forward?
Well then, can we, can we table this for another two weeks and see if you guys can go back and work with the city on some options?
Our request would be that it not be a condition of the plat because the plat wouldn't establish, the plat isn't the, from our perspective, the plat maybe isn't the appropriate mechanism to establish infrastructure that was not included within our, within our construction documents. The plat is to establish the lots and the right-of-ways or any easements to the, to the mayor's point, but to condition it upon an agreement for payment of a public trail project or, or something along those lines, I guess I, I question if it's the appropriate avenue to do it at the final plat.
It may not be, but I, to me, there's just too many open questions right now with, with regard to the confusion on the request and where we're at. I mean, it would have, so what if we wait on this plat for two weeks? I mean, what's the difference?
Does it affect your project?
Yes, yeah, so we are, right now, the critical path.
You can't sell lots with the final plat.
Yeah, the, the critical path for us to be able to build the homes in this phase is to get the final plat recorded.
Well, yeah, but I, this is, I always struggle with this when I have these, we'd have these discussions. If there's a misunderstanding or there's an issue and then we have developers that say two weeks is gonna, you know, I, I just can't believe that the cycle is that tight, two weeks. I, I just can't believe that, that the cycle is that tight, two weeks, you know, vote here in two weeks.
Right now, we are, in our previous phase, we are completely out of lots.
I understand that, but the, a two-week wait, what, I mean, what if these plans weren't done by today and you had to wait two weeks? You're telling me your entire project's not gonna move forward on a two-week standstill? I mean, if that's the case, I'm just gonna vote no. And then, and then you guys can work it out in two weeks and come back anyway. So I mean, I, I think we should just try to work it out.
Administrator Fry?
Jason, can you go back to that exhibit?
This one?
Yes. So when I'm looking at this, and, and I look at the legend, and at the very bottom, it's got a gray line that says sidewalks. And then I look along Concord Road and I see a gray line.
I do too.
But I thought.
Yeah.
But now that's not on the current plat and easements, though, right?
Correct.
What, what, uh-
So, so we're not saying that it's missed. It, to be it shown on here, we need to work out how this happens.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, then I'm a no tonight. You guys can come back in two weeks and figure it out.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
I would say, why don't we approve the plat tonight? And then we're, we're still in discussion on the sidewalk portion of it, but at least they could continue to move forward.
You're gonna take away all of our negotiating?
No, no, not at all.
How do you, what do you mean, not at all? They'll start selling lots, and then the, the lots can't be sold with any of this cost-
With any of this cost built in.
We'll have to come back for all subsequent phases for the development agreement.
So what are the subsequent phases?
There are probably three to four additional phases anticipated throughout the day. It's the road that loops around north. None of, none of that yet is designed, or, well, final design. We have the preliminary plat, but I don't know if you can see-
And those are the more expensive homes, so those are larger lots, so they could absorb-
Um, so, yeah, none of this is designed or prelim- or, it's preliminary plotted, but it is not designed or permitted, nor this connection out this direction.
So you're asking that we, you're asking that we approve this plat, and we're, you tentatively agree to that sidewalk, but you want us to do it on the next one, so that you can spread that cost more evenly.
Well, and that way we can keep this project moving forward while we work with staff and whoever.
So we can approve this, we have, we have future negotiating.
We need to make, because you said two things. One, we can't build this sidewalk, it wasn't there, and it's too expensive. Now what we're hearing is, and we're seeing is, yes, there's a sidewalk, but somehow there's miscommunication, possibly. I don't have a problem approving the plat if we have a commitment that you're gonna build the sidewalk, and we'll do that through the process, and you'll do it with the other, with the other parts of your development. That's no problem. But I, I think this council needs to hear from you, that you're making a commitment that you're gonna build a sidewalk, yes or no?
I guess our request is that we approve, theoretically approve the plat tonight, and we'll work with staff to address the, the trail concern, or the sidewalk concern.
But when you talk trail concerns, you were talking about internal, that's where your discussions were earlier. Not a sidewalk along there, which is what we're all seeing on the map. So I want to make sure we don't put our staff in a position that they can't work with you to get something done, and then they have to come and tell us that.
Right.
Do you understand where I'm coming from?
No, understand.
I think we, I mean, I think where, where I'm at is, and I would agree to this, is that I'll approve tonight that plat, but you should, with the understanding that nothing else will be approved, until you've come to a resolution on that sidewalk for us. And so don't bring something else forward without having that completed.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I have one other point, though. When we, when we allow them to move forward with this section and other portions of the project, lot whiffs were reduced from seventy feet to fifty-six feet, side yard setbacks ten to seven, sidewalks both sides, now no cul-de-sac sidewalks, street yard setbacks twenty-five, now it's twenty. We've already given a lot of changes. We have a, we have a-
Absolutely.
A document from then that appears to show a sidewalk, that was our staff's understanding. And now they're saying, well, we can't afford it, we want to make more money on these lots, so we're not gonna do it. And maybe we'll figure it out later on. I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with that. They can come back in two weeks and give us a plan to get it done, and how they're gonna do it. And maybe we approve the plat as is with the plan that's in place, but I'm not gonna do it based on their word tonight.
Rusty?
I've got a question not related to the sidewalks, actually, it's probably actually for Jason. My, my concern or hang-up right now is the designation of these, what are we calling the duplex-style homes?
Twin homes, yes.
As single-family. If I'm understanding correctly, ten or twelve of them share a wall, and what I would assume a roofline? Which, then what's the difference between a multifamily home?
Well, this was part of the plan development. They came in and they said they wanted to try to build more attainable homes, and they were cutting costs, so they wanted smaller lots and reduce setbacks. And this is a product that Veridian Homes offers. A, a group of us went out to Madison and we toured some of their developments. I showed photos of that to the prior councils. And I said, this is a part of this development, will contain, contain twin homes. And it was agreed that that could be incorporated into the project. We have other subdivisions, such as Alderman Ellis's subdivision, that has duplexes within the development. And we figured this was just an avenue to, to bring more attainable housing to the community.
Yeah, duplexes, I understand. And then, and the question become fire suppression, too. I, we, we require fire suppression, advanced fire suppression in apartments. If there's that many units sharing common walls and rooflines and all of that, I struggle designing these single-family. So I mean, I think they should count against the multifamily.
I think there's only one unit with two sides to it per lot. This isn't a row.
This isn't a townhouse, town row like that.
There might be twelve parcels, but each parcel has a building that has one unit on one side, one unit on the other side with a shared wall.
It's two parcels, that's the difference. Every, every house has its own parcel. Each half of the house has its own parcel. So a one building sits on two parcels.
Correct.
So it's a string of, it's one big building.
No, 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 no.
There's gaps, every, there's, there's two units and then a gap, two units and then a gap.
Okay.
And that, that's already been approved, I think we need to. But it's good for the clarification. We want to make sure that we're fair to the applicant. So council, where do you want to go with this? I don't want to limit their ability to sell homes. I also want to have some confidence that we're gonna get the sidewalk. And I, I guess, if you come back and tell me you're trying to make this more affordable, and use that as your, as your rationale, while it's partially true, I don't really care where you get the money, whether it's from these folks, from the other folks. That's part of your business operations, what you want to do, and that's fine. What I'm concerned about is, we don't really know you. This is the first development you've done in Oconomowoc. And we have other developers that have been here, that this would be no big deal, we'd, we'd work it out with staff. So is there anything that you can give us confidence? That the council is comfortable voting on this tonight? And that you will, can make a commitment? That they can feel comfortable moving this forward, because we want to help you. We want to be good municipal government to try to help you in a development. We want you to be successful. You have a shot, so it's yours.
Yeah. I don't know, I guess I don't know how we would want to word it. But if it, I, if council is saying that they want to see a condition of an approval, I think is more important to us to keep moving on the, on the project in this phase. What format or when we bring the sidewalk resolution, I guess I'd, open, open discussion, and what the council wants to recommend is, I guess, as long as the important part is, it's not going to hold up this plat at this moment.
So I think you've had one idea, council, from Alderman Mulder, that you pass this and condition that nothing else will be approved moving forward until this is resolved. If, did I hear that correctly, Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's one option. The other option is to say, hey, let's go back, come back in two weeks. It's not that long a period of time. Just come back with all of our ducks in line and everything resolved. Because this isn't like you just heard it the first time. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Alderman, Alderman cloth. And the other thing is, you can just vote on it, that's, that's fine.
This is kind of a tough one. Again, I still stand my ground. I just, I don't see the purpose of a, a sidewalk there. But, you know, your comment about holding this up for two weeks, when you look at all the different development in our community, two weeks is not gonna hurt this. I mean, people aren't lining up at, you know, the door to get property in Oconomowoc. So I guess if, for the sake of doing this right, whether I agree or disagree with some of the parts of it, I'm, I think I'm in favor with them coming, you guys coming back in two weeks and just do this the right way.
I, I don't, to, to Matt's option, I, I was thinking about it after he said it. I, I don't think we can make a condition that we won't vote on something else in the future. I don't think we can do it, I like that, because they're, they're-
You can do it, it's worth the breath that you take right now, because it could change your mind.
What I'm saying is, right, the next vote, we can say, well, we said it last time, but we're gonna prove it now with, without that condition. So it sounds like it could be a, a solution, but it really isn't. So I, I'd like to see us just come back in two weeks with some type of plan, some type of concept of how they're going to split it out and do it in two weeks. You know, that's where I'm at, so.
Karen?
Okay, one last shot at you. If you, if, if you commit to us that you would do that sidewalk tonight, how does that affect your sales going forward? Have you already established the lot prices, or can you factor that in? I mean, Mulder just did a quick calculation, and based on how much that sidewalk might cost, it might be only like another thousand dollars per home.
Yes, we've established pricing for this upcoming phase already. The rest of the phase of the development, we have not. And so that's why it's, for, for us, our priority would be to try to protect this phase in the current moment.
Then they can come back with that plan, right? In two weeks, how they're gonna plan to do it, how they're planning to feather it in.
I mean, like I was gonna, like I said, unless you want to commit and can do the sidewalk, if you want to do that tonight, you'd get the goal.
I guess I'd have a, I guess I'd have a question for maybe Jason and the, the city attorney, is how would, would, we've already permitted and began work on this phase. We're working on the plat with the understanding that we're, we're going to be working towards accepting the infrastructure and recording the plat in short order here. What would the timeline expectation be for the completion of the sidewalk? Would it be prior to recording this plat, or?
Anytime.
As long as we know.
As long as it's defined, it's fine. We're just trying, we're looking at the long-term game. The short term doesn't need to be a sidewalk there, we get that.
Right.
But we also thought the same thing just down the road.
Yeah.
That's, that one has, it has trails inside as well. And that is used all the time.
Yeah.
Because I see it, because I drive past.
We would, we would like, if we were to set a condition for the approval of the sidewalk extension, I guess our request would be, if it would not be tied to the recording of the Phase Five plat. If we could find an, an alternative way to make sure that, you know, whether it's, say, a, a time period that would be accepted, acceptable to the city council, but not necessarily tied to the plat and the building permits for Phase Five.
Is it Phase Five or Four?
Oh, sorry, Phase Four. My apologies, my apologies.
Can you put out the proposed final plat? So the plat itself does not include the area where the sidewalk would go.
Correct.
That is on outlots.
Some of it.
What?
This, this area is part of the final plat.
The other question is-
So that's a problem.
But find, some of, sidewalks aren't typically shown on a, on a final plat. Those are what Ben was recommend, or referring to the construction drawings. So final plats don't show sidewalks.
Are those two outlots?
Yeah, these are outlots.
Outlet twelve and outlet fourteen are part of this plat?
Yes.
Okay. So it would simply be a, an approval of the plat conditioned upon the developer installing the sidewalk within the right-of-way that is described on the plat, within, whatever you say.
Twelve months. Is that acceptable?
Okay.
We're, we're trying to help, and I know it's, I know you're-
I understand, I understand.
You know, we don't mean to be jerks about this, but-
You gotta go and tell people what you did. And you probably don't have the authority to tell us that you have the authority to do this.
That's why I'm still thinking two weeks is a better option, but-
Well, if he, he makes a commitment today, this is proved conditional, and this can be incomplete in twelve, twelve months. What happens, though, when they start selling these lots? And all of a sudden, they don't build the sidewalk.
Sometimes asking the bosses, you know, for forgiveness and not permission is not a horrible way.
You can stop issuing building permits.
We can stop issuing building permits. Okay, so we have something we can do.
Yeah, and the sidewalk within that plat is only about half of what-
The plat still requires signatures, so we could just not sign it until we have something, commitment and writing from Veridian Homes. That way, that gives Ben an opportunity to talk to his superiors about this, and, and, you know, we can get something in writing from them.
Good point.
So it could be approved tonight, but we won't sign it.
Trying to figure out how we can approve it tonight, but still get the option. And what I'm hearing now is, you're willing to put in the sidewalks, as long as we're realistic on a timeframe. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Can you just say that for the record, please?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm just making, crossing my Ts.
Well, the language you used was, we are willing to construct the sidewalk as long as it is within a, what did you say, reasonable timeframe?
Reasonable timeframe, which we can define, or council can define, as twelve months?
Yeah.
Is that fair? Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
One second.
Any further questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rosick?
Nay.
Alderman Altman cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder? Alderman Shellpepper?
No.
Alderman McConnell?
Nay.
Alderman Youngworth?
Nay.
Chair vote.
So it's up to me. Aye. So we'd like to move that forward. We'd like to build the relationship you, with you, like we have with a lot of our other developers. So this is kind of a, a tipping point for your development, and so far, things have gone well. When we've had construction issues, you guys have responded well. So please take a positive note back to your folks, and I look forward to walking down that sidewalk in twelve months.
I'm gonna rollerblade.
Have a wonderful night, and thank you for your patience. And council, I think there are, there are good reasons for the, the nay votes, and I really respect why those nay votes came out. But I think we're gonna be able to accomplish what we want by moving this forward, and hopefully help you fill those quickly. Thank you. All right, next up, Jason. Consider act on ordinance twenty-five dash zero one nine eight to amend the general development plan for Market Square Commercial Development located at the northeast corner of Summit Avenue and Valley Road. Jason?
We held a public hearing on this earlier this evening. I won't go through the entire presentation, but it is to amend that general development plan to allow this building to be constructed at sixteen seventy-two Old Schoolhouse Road. They are utilizing this on Unit Seven, as shown on there. What was previously approved was fifty-six hundred and sixty-six square feet, and they would like to go up to approximately, I, I gave them all the way up to sixty-four hundred square feet. There could be some wiggle room on the footprints, so I'm, Plan Commission did recommend approval of this.
Any comments or questions? Alderman Ellis?
Yeah, I remember this. I was the only one who didn't vote for it. And my reasoning was this, my concern is-
On the Plan Commission?
On the Plan Commission. My, my concern was traffic flow. It's also the loss of parking. They mentioned the private drive, and they also mentioned a fence that was gonna be around the transformer and the dumpster. When you look at the building itself, it's a hazard, because the level between the sidewalk and where that building is isn't substantial enough, so that if somebody misses that, they can actually take that fence down. Can I see that, the, the one fence that's gonna be housing? I believe it was either the transformer or the dumpsters. There it is, right there, okay? That concerns me an awful lot. I also ask the question in reference to why the additional seven hundred square feet. And seven hundred square- And 700 square feet is not big. I, I, and the answer that I received, it just didn't fly with me at all. I, I felt, I felt as though the 5,666 was more than ample and more than enough, especially being that not every room is going to be occupied and that some rooms will not be, whereas others will, and they'll be introducing new patients in while other patients are leaving and then they're cleaning. I just, I, I, I know I was the only one, but I was the one who said that I'd, I'd rather not have this come to council, because I just felt as though what he's asking is going to be a lot bigger than what I really think it needs to be. Also, the parking. The only area that I believe, especially at the peak hours, is going to be around Qdoba. I believe that is Qdoba, okay? But we've all been in that area, and we know where Qdoba is as compared to where this building is going. That's a walk. That's a walk. And it just, it, it just didn't make sense to me at all. So that's why I said no. And I'm still saying no.
I'd like to open up for conversation. We also have the applicant here today, if anybody would like to talk to them. Open up, Alderman Rosick.
I like the project. I, I think actually the parking there is underutilized significantly. Jason brought that up. The building looks really nice, I think it's going to be a good addition. It's, to, to your point, Kevin, it's not a ton of extra square feet, I get that. But the other buildings in front took away square footage when they redid their buildings, and so this is basically adding that square footage back in. Is it the ideal spot, kind of in that location? I don't know. But I'm also not a business owner to know whether they really need that extra 700 square feet. I don't run a dental office, so I'm not going to, you know, judge that. I will say, the parking in that area is terribly underutilized. I've never not been able to park pretty much right in front of Mod or Qdoba or Noodles or, I mean, I go to everything in there, including the auto shop, so we go there all the time for something. The nail salon a lot.
Just for your toes, though.
Mostly pedicures, manicure, yeah, mostly pedis.
I wonder who went there.
I'm a regular, I've got a special spot right there, so I'm not going to worry about it. But I, I'm in favor of it. Kevin, you, you brought up some good points, but I, I think my experience being out there is that the parking's underutilized significantly there, there's a lot of space that there's just never anyone parked there. And yeah, there might be some people that have to walk a little further. Hopefully, they cut a deal with some employee parking with, yeah, by the yard, because that is really never, I mean, there is never anyone parked there.
Yeah.
Because it's big, expensive stuff, you go there and buy stuff once and you never go back again. So I think, hopefully, they'll cut a deal and employees park across the street, so.
Other comments from council members? Any questions? And I echo what you say, Matt, and it's basically a building that's in a concrete slab area. Sure, it would be nice to have a lot of green space, but they're also trying to, we want them, if they're going to build something, build something that's profitable and sustainable. Like to entertain a motion, then?
I'll move as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Congratulations. And good luck. Oh, they're hugging. Sounds good, okay. Let's move on to some new business. Consider Act on the Developers Agreement for Old Highlander Phase Three. Mr. Gala, or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Herzog.
Say Jason.
Jason. Yeah, right.
You hit Jason. 50% right.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, all like, all of a sudden, we are on Phase Three of our Old Highlander subdivision over in Olympia Fields or Olympia Hills with Newman Development. They proposed this from a couple of years ago, so we're on Edition Three. And this is a mixture of 29 single-family homes, nine condos, and 44 townhome lots. Sounds like they're doing very well with the townhome lots and continuing to move forward with that. That was all part of this plan. This project will have our typical infrastructure requiring the Developers Agreement that will be entering in. It's very similar to our Phase One and Two. The language, the maps, the exhibits, the preliminary plat are all included in your pamphlet. Any questions on that? That would be with our Newman Development.
Questions or comments from council? Like to turn a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Thank you.
And to Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3283 approving the appointment of the official city newspaper for the 2526.
So this is, the city is required to designate an official newspaper with, we have two publications still in the city, it's West Now and the Oconomowoc Enterprise, so our office solicited for bids, and Oconomowoc Enterprise provided us with the lowest bid. They publish notices every Thursday, they've been in, in our low bidder for a number of years, and, and we publish approximately 170 publications with them every year, and things have gone well. So our, our recommendation is to designate them the official newspaper for this year.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Are they the lowest or the only?
No, I did receive two bids.
Oh.
So the other one was from, it's JS Online, it's actually a Gannett publication, and their, their bid was almost three times as much.
Like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Altman Cloth.
Second, Ellis.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to our next item. Next item, Mr. Duffy, Consider Act on Resolution 25-R3285 for Chapman Park Restroom.
During continuing appropriations, we allocated funds for a future restroom structure adjacent to the Lake Country Trail by Chapman Park. We have moved that project forward to receive approval from the Park Board, as well the Architecture Commission. Next step we need is the approval of the resolution by the council, which authorizes staff to place the order and do a purchase order for the actual restroom structure.
Everything's in your packets, questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Ellis.
Second, Rosick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Bob.
It helps to be at the end.
Next up, we've already done the mayoral appointments, any staff reports?
No, sir.
Any comments from Alderman? Or Alderman Spiegelberg?
I was just going to note Memorial Day coming up, and obviously, we'll be out, I assume with the local VFW putting up flags on Monday. We appreciate the, you know, extra flags that are downtown as well, that have been put on the street poles, and so, you know, looking forward to honoring our fallen service members, and appreciate, you know, the support from the city, so.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
I was going to say that as well. Bandshell, 10 to 11:30, and then, of course, the parade and everything that goes through down to the bridge where they throw the wreath in. But I also, so I also wanted to say that Versity Blood Center, formerly Blood Center of Wisconsin, they're doing four upcoming drives in Oconomowoc in honor of Memorial Day, so if you guys can, we've got, Oconomowoc Memorial Hospital is May 20th, Oconomowoc Public Library is May 30th, Burn Boot Camp is June 2nd, and Oconomowoc Community Center is June 3rd. So if you, if you can do that, it, it would be greatly appreciated, and also in honor of our fallen heroes, so.
Any other comments? Mayoral comments? I have one comment, I'm pleased to announce Eric Betcher has reported back that the Lac La Belle Lake District has approved payment of the $275,000 commitment that they made to the boat launch for the City of Oconomowoc. So that's why Eric stepped away, is to answer any questions that may have come up, and they have followed through on their commitment and are compliments to all of them. So at this time, I'd like to go into closed session. The closed session is for potential development of a tax incremental District Number Seven. The Common Council, the City of Oconomowoc, will convene upon the passage of the proper motion into closed session with staff pursuant to Section 19.851E. The purpose of the meeting is delivering and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, conducting of specific public businesses wherever competitive and bargaining reasons require a closed session, specifically regarding to the potential additional development of the Olympia Fields and Old Highlander projects in tax increment District Number Seven. The council will go into closed session in Room Three, and then we will adjourn in closed session and adjourn the council meeting from Room Three. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second, Youngworth.
Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rosick. Alderman Rosick.